Welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. As a preliminary matter, this is Kevin Calcutta, the Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Anita Mecklenburg? I saw waving a hi, C.C. Van Tyne?
Here, can you hear me?
Sure can, thank you.
Just making sure my audio is working. I am here.
You are good. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Blight Robinson?
Here.
And Judith Lozardi?
Looks like Judith has her audio off.
Yep. All right, so good evening. The open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. And a quick note as well, there will be minimal screen sharing tonight, but if you are joining us by video, please note that if you do somehow accidentally share your screen, we cannot undo that. This is being recorded and streamed. That all being said, Blight, would you be so kind as to take us through our agenda this evening?
Yes, of course. First items up are the usual COVID-19 updates, followed by public comment. We then have a presentation by Norfolk Cable TV about the renewal of the Verizon cable license. The action items tonight include consideration of to approve an ascertainment report provided by NCTV for its future capital and equipment needs. Several items related to street signs in Norfolk. Consider approval of a contract between the Medicomit Emergency Communications Center and the town for building, maintenance, and custodial services. To consider approving a contract for DPW services put out by the Southeastern Regional Services Group. To consider two uses for Town Hill in 2021, one for the Excel School of Dance for their spring celebration in June, and one for the Garden Club of Norfolk for its annual plant and bake sale in May. Further, to consider reappointments of the members of the 150th Anniversary Parade Committee, and to consider a six-month extension of the license for Norfolk Town Taxi. Discussion items include a presentation by the Police Department on future capital needs. To consider to discuss website postings of board correspondence, town administrator updates. We have five warrants for the board to approve and some minutes for the board to approve.
Thank you very much, Blight. Would you mind taking us now through our first agenda item, our COVID-19 updates?
Of course. So as you, as people may have realized, our posting to the website of COVID information changed slightly last week, and it will be updated every Thursday going forward. As of last Thursday, we have 496 cases, positive cases in Norfolk. It continues to increase, and the town continues to be in the red zone. The red zone means that we, as a community, stepped back to Phase Three Step One in the state's reopening plan. And then later in the week, as you probably already know, the governor determined statewide we'd go back to Phase One, so everybody's in that situation right now. From a financial perspective, we have fairly well exhausted the CARES funds that we were allotted through the state earlier this year. And we are waiting to see what's going to happen at the federal level with stimulus. Listening to the news tonight, it doesn't sound like state and local aid will be part of that final package. So we need to keep our eye on that because our expenses for COVID won't go away on December 31st, when those funds have to be used up. Just as a data point, since June, the town has spent $21,000 on nursing services alone. But that, of course, doesn't include expenses for protective equipment for first responders or school expenses. So we're certainly keeping our eye on that. And if it doesn't come through or comes later, we will have to pivot in terms of figuring out how to pay for those sorts of things. So that's just something to be aware of. So those are my updates right at this point.
Thank you, Blight. And I think I'll just add, after a couple of weeks of going back and forth with some concerned residents, and obviously our fight to try to get as much data as we can from the state, you know, a lot of things that we've been told up to this point have identified that the prison was the main driver behind our designation as being a high-risk community. While the prison, for a good three weeks, absolutely was the main driver, I can say with confidence that at this point, as of last week, the town would still be a high-risk community without the prison cases. Right now, as Blight had mentioned, 496 cases, 320 of those are dedicated to the prison, which means 176 have been within the community. So it is even more important now than ever for us to be diligent in our mitigation methods, social distancing, wearing masks, being safe, and keeping the groups that we interact with as small as possible. So I just wanted to add that color to that as well, Blight. Do we have any questions or comments related to the COVID-19 updates from the board?
Yeah, I have a question, and it's my usual question. So what you just said was that there was 300 and change positive cases at the prison with the delta 100 and change being within the community. That's not current, though, correct? That's from March to the prison.
December 9th. Oh, yes, yes, yes. That is completely from the beginning of tracking until now. Correct?
That's it. Thank you.
Anita, any questions or comments? Seeing a head shake. No? I'll open it up to anybody in attendance this evening. If you do have a question or a comment related to the COVID-19 updates, we ask that you please use the raise hand function at this time, and we'll call on you. If you are unable to find the raise hand function, please feel free to wave furiously at your camera. I'm seeing no hands and no furious waving. As such, we will be moving on. All right, our next agenda item this evening is our public comment period. This is the point of the meeting where we invite anybody in attendance who would like to share with the board about three minutes to be able to identify a question or a comment related to the scope of the Select Board or the town administrator. If you would like to share with us your public comment this evening, I would ask that you please use the raise hand feature at this time. If you're having trouble finding the raise hand function, it is on the bottom toolbar. Once you click into Participants, it would be right there. Doesn't seem like finding it's an issue. And I do not believe that we have anybody for public comment this evening.
We do. Kevin, we do. Pam was raising her hand.
There's someone raising, madly gesticulating at the camera, like her arms are coming out.
Your background was hiding your hand. That was difficult to see.
Her hands are coming out of the flower. Awesome. But that-
All right, Pamela, go right ahead. If you could just state your name and your address and come off mute before you start talking. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. I do have a question. I'd like to know, what is the responsibility of a towns person if one encounters a large group of people gathering without a mask? I don't want to draw the ire of my neighbors or townspeople, but I did encounter a barbecue with about 50 people with no masks at Thanksgiving. And I just want to know-
Blight, I believe our recommended scope, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Pamela.
As I said, I don't want to be telling tales out of school, but I was really distraught and not sure how to handle it, so I did nothing, and now I regret it.
So Blight, I believe our guidance up until this point was that if somebody did have a concern about adherence that could impact public safety, that they're asked to call the non-emergency police number at this time. Is that correct, or do we have different guidance to provide?
No, that's correct. I mean, if it's during the week, you certainly can call the Board of Health, you know, during, when Town Hall is open, and Betsy can help with that to some extent. But the Police Department has been, has the authority from the Board of Health to interact with that. And my guess is that what they're going to do is deploy somebody as they can and help them understand why this is concerning and hopefully get them to change their behavior.
I mean, there were literally at least 50 people, and not one of them had a mask.
Sorry to hear that.
So I didn't know what to do. So now I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else from public comment this evening? Now I'm scanning to make sure I'm not missing any waving hands. No, I don't believe I am. All right, so with that, we can move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is the Verizon cable license public comment for renewal of the license. Blight, would you mind giving us some background, please?
Yes, so as a bit of background, the town has a license with both Comcast and Verizon for the provision of television services. Obviously, those two companies provide more than television services to residents, but for the purposes of the community, that's the only thing the state allows us to license locally. And they're both 10-year licenses. You and C.C. were on the board last year when we had a similar topic on the agenda to talk about the Comcast license, which is, needs to be renewed in 2022. The Verizon license trailed about a year behind. It expires in January of '23. So we received notice from the state that it's time to start that process. And the first part of that process is to have a meeting like this and invite Verizon, if they choose to come, and try to give the community an update about cable television and also take any comment that people may have about that service in the community. And then after that, we can start the negotiation process. So joining us tonight is Katie Jefferson, the Executive Director of NCTV. Hey, Katie. And she has developed a short presentation, which I think is very informative about the license, about their operation. And she's going to go through that for you and then take any questions that you have. There's no actions required from the board.
Thank you very much, Blight, and welcome, Katie. How are you doing tonight?
I'm good. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
You're very welcome. Do you have something to show this evening, or will you just be speaking?
I do. I have a short presentation. If it's all right to screen share.
Very good. Well, I just made you co-host, so please feel free to go ahead.
Thank you. So we do have with us today three members of our Board of Directors. So we have Pamela Russell, we have Reynolds Lee and Liz Davy, so they're here as well if there's any questions about the Verizon presentation that I'm about to do, as well as the Comcast ascertainment, which is coming up next. We kind of have double duty this time around, up for renewal in the next little bit. So we're just going to talk a little bit about what it is we do. I know there's a lot of people out there who don't really know about us and why this license is important to us and that type of thing. So we'll go over some historical data, some community impact, future needs. And then we have a few quotes from people for local support. When we did this back in October, we had people come and speak, which was amazing and powerful. But I figured for the sake of time, and since we've done it, we did it a year ago, I would just go with quotes this year. So first of all, a little bit of historical data about us. The current Verizon license commenced on January 28, 2008, and will expire January 27, 2023. So it's a three-year process to develop these licenses, which is why we start now. And the town of Norfolk negotiated 5% of all cable revenue earned through the use of Norfolk's public ways to be paid back for the purpose of running a nonprofit and bipartisan hyper-local television station. 5% is the highest that you can negotiate for. So we're really lucky that both Comcast and Verizon agreed to 5% back when these licenses were negotiated. We're known as Norfolk Community Television or NCTV publicly, but our legal name is Norfolk Cable Corporation, so that's what a lot of our documents will reference. In addition to the 5% general operating funds, the town also negotiated a set of capital funds for capital purchase needs. So that's stuff like computers, cameras, switching equipment, lights, tripods, all of that kind of stuff that makes our organization function. So Verizon contributed a sum of $150,000 with the last license, which was dispersed in three payments of $50,000 in 2008, 2009, and 2015. In contrast, Comcast contributed a total of $50,000 in capital funds, which was dispersed at $10,000 a year for the first five years of their 10-year contracts. So this past Verizon contract was 15 years, and our Comcast was 10 years. And so they just happened to both be up for renewal at this time. It also was the, I think I had noted in a later slide, but this is also our first Verizon contract. This was right when they came into town. So this will be the first renegotiation of this contract. So NCTV is a PEG station, which provides public education and government channels to the town of Norfolk. Our education channel is actually programmed by the Rantham Cable Station, and it has all of the regional KP stuff, so they do a lot of the sports and KP school committee meetings, things like that. That's what's run on the education channel. And then all of the public schools' educational content and public content is showed on NCTV's public channel. All three are pillars of the PEG model. And while we as staff like to think that public is the most fun because you can be a lot more creative, what the town wants is all the government information. So it just kind of shows you how important each of those different types of channels are to different people. We have an unwavering commitment to freedom of speech, and we encourage people from the entire spectrum of ideas and beliefs to create, share, and explore different media available. Access to information is a key pillar of NCTV's values, and we strive to provide multiple ways for people to engage with local content, such as broadcasting our cable channels, on-demand viewing online, as well as downloadable video files for a small cost. We used to do a lot of DVDs, but that has since gone by the wayside, and we do a lot of file transfers now. So it's the same content, just a different mode of getting it to people. Especially in COVID, we've been increasing that tenfold. So while 2020 has been a little bit different than the norm, we do offer youth programs for nine-to-12-year-olds in the past year. So we also expanded to 13-to-15-year-olds, where they can learn different technical skills. We've done stuff such as stop-motion animation. We did narrative storytelling. We tried doing like a horror. That was a really fun one with the older kids. We did a horror camp, and they made this whole scary movie. And we plan to continue this when it's safe to do so, of course. One of the other highlights is that we also developed a media literacy program in 2015, and we run that every year for either a month or a week. It depends on the year. But we teach people in town how to look at media with a critical eye and to learn to interpret messages. So a lot of the kids now are getting that education in school, but for the older generation, we didn't quite have that when we were younger. So we've noticed that hole in the community and have really been doing what we can to fill that hole. Video is also a unique medium to be able to access a video recording for years to come. So it's also partially historical preservation. And we've worked a lot with the Historical Commission to add these key Norfolk moments to the library and to the school systems and things like that. And in 2020 specifically, we've done a lot more to get out there and be able to provide these events that people can't congregate at, but we can film them, and then people can watch them on cable, which has been really, really helpful. This is just a short list of some awards that we've won. Three of them are national awards in 2018 and 2019. And our most recent was a 2020 Nor'easter Award, which is regional for the Kathurian Dance Studio Documentary that was done last year. So we're very, very proud of both our staff and our members for creating such compelling content. We've also been able to film everything in high definition since 2012, and we've had the ability to send an HD signal to Verizon since October 2017. This is important because we broadcast in standard def, and I think it's even four-by-three. I don't watch the, I don't live in town, so I can't watch it as much as somebody else could. But this is definitely an issue when it comes to staying up to date. You know, a lot of times when people think of public access, they think of a ranking-dead corporation who's not necessarily up to speed with technology, but we're actually, you know, right on the cutting edge with what we can produce, and we take great pride in our work as well. But the lack of HD channels and the exclusion from the Electronic Program Guide hinders the public's access to these types of programs. So the Electronic Program Guide is when you can look and see what time a show is coming on. A lot of times, it'll just say "to be announced," or it'll say "local programming or local access." It doesn't give you a show-by-show breakdown of what shows are coming up. So we put our schedules on our website, and we do it in between shows. We have like a slide that people can look at to see what's coming up. But you have to catch those, or you have to be internet savvy to be able to find that out. So a lot of people express that it's difficult to find out what's on. And it's just another way that public access is not treated equally as the other cable stations that are around. I think if we had that in the guide, people might click to it more often than just saying "to be announced." I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the capital upgrades that we would need just to maintain a level of service over the next 10 years. Each of these would probably need to be done about twice, because as you can see, the longest lifespan of equipment is about seven years. So we have computers, we have control room equipment, which includes a video switcher, an audio board, light board, cameras, intercom system, tripods, microphones, and all of the wires, cables, accessories, adapters, all of that. We have our town meeting room, which has three PTZ, which is pan tilt zoom. They're controlled by a board, so one person can control all three cameras in the room, as well as switcher, microphone, et cetera. We have two to three prosumer, and prosumer is in between a consumer and a professional camera, so it's right in that in-between. And that's typically what we like to use, because it gives us a little bit more flexibility than the little point-and-shoot cameras, but it's not as expensive as the professional cameras, as well as tripods, wireless microphones, and then our playback system, which is what we use to actually program the channels. That lasts about seven years. But you never know. Technology is changing so fast these days that sometimes it's hard to keep up. For community support, I'm not going to read all of these quotes, but just wanted to give you all an idea of the different groups that we've worked with over the years and how we've built these relationships, and they can see some of the value in what we do. And we're very, very lucky to have such a supportive community. So we have this one from Sergeant Michelle Palladini. We have one from Jen Cody from Excel School of Dance, as well as Liz Davy, who started out with her own show and has recently become one of our board members. We have one from Dr. Alardi, the Superintendent of the Norfolk Public Schools. We have one from Bill McGoldrick, who is a Norfolk resident, and he does a show talking to other guitarists in the area, and they do some playing. And he's really been a huge supporter of us for many years. And our last one today is Vasca from the Ivy Music Academy. And that's it for my presentation. So I don't know if you want to, if there's any questions from the board, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Katie. And, you know, I know I say it time and time again, but we really do appreciate everything that Norfolk Community Television does for our community. Just speaking from a member of one of the boards in town, it's incredibly helpful to be able to catch up on meetings and for you to be able to stream our meetings on YouTube Live, so that those who can't necessarily attend in non-COVID situations are able to view them live. So thank you so much for everything you provide. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I'll pass it around to the rest of the board for any questions or comments they have on Katie's presentation, starting with C.C.
Nope, no questions. As with last year, an impressive presentation. And I'm always amazed at, for like what a little tiny town we are, the level of sophistication of our communication systems. It's pretty incredible. Like, it's really neat. So for whatever that's worth, no questions.
Thank you so much.
And I don't have any questions either, Katie. Such a nice job. And it is so, it is a true gem of Norfolk. And so thank you for the work that you're doing and happy to support you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, we'll open it up to any, I'm sorry, Blight, did you have something you wanted to add?
Wanted to point of information for people. You hear a lot of chatter, especially on Facebook these days, about, hey, what are you doing? I'm thinking about cutting the cable. I'm thinking out ways I can save my household money, and that's really important. But I think it's also just important to tell people that part of your cable TV bill, if you choose to still purchase services that way, is part of what supports a local channel like this. That they, as Katie mentioned at the beginning, they receive 5% of all revenue. And so when that revenue goes down, it affects that. And, you know, I just would like people to give that a minute's thought when they're thinking about what they're going to do. If they value the local access and the public programs and local government programs, this is how that gets paid for, because it's not in the town's budget. Although we hold the contract, the money goes straight to, that comes in, goes straight to NCTV. It doesn't come to the town, and we don't have anything else in our budget. So as I said, just a point of information. Thank you.
Thanks, Blight. At this time, we'll open it up for anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question or provide a comment related to these current agenda item. If you could, please use the raise hand function at this time. Mr. Hadad, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address before your comment, go right ahead, sir.
Ed Hadad, 138 Red Maple Run. Katie, I was very impressed with your presentation. I really didn't realize all the good things you do. I know I've seen some of them, but I didn't realize all of them, unfortunately. It's very difficult in a town without a newspaper to get the word out. So I was just wondering, for example, like a feed like Verbio, I get Verbio every week. Do you do something like that, where you could send out something regularly to subscribers or people who sign up so that we can be aware of all the programming offerings that you have?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a newsletter that, it's not as regular. It goes out when we have something going on. But you also could subscribe to our YouTube channel, so you'll get notifications when new videos are posted and things like that. We also have social media, and we have a blog on our website. So those are all ways that you could engage with us. But we're also happy to answer questions. You can feel free to call us anytime.
Could you possibly like connect with the, I know the library does a great job in getting word out about their programs. Can you somehow connect with them or work with them on?
Yeah, absolutely.
The possibility, I don't know.
Definitely. It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Do we have another comment or question for Katie? I'm not seeing any hands. Pamela, I see your hand this time. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Well, first, I want to say that in spite of COVID and all that we've been going through, NCTV has been programming and producing shows outside of the station virtually and streaming. And I just, I'm really proud of the staff. And as president, I'm just, I'm feeling that, you know, we're coming through this. And to have and to be a part of NCTV is really, for me, a very fulfilling experience. And I implore all of you, when you speak to people in town, to encourage them to get involved and ask questions and become members. We really encourage that, and the more people involved, the better it will be and more comprehensive. So please feel free to ask questions and tell your neighbors and friends about NCTV. Spread the word. Thank you. And we look forward to, once we can all meet in person, we have developed the most beautiful space for meetings and events. And, you know, it took a long time to get it together, but it's pretty much there, and it's beautiful. And I'm really looking forward to the day that we can open the doors and welcome people in for events. And I'm really looking forward to the day that we can open the doors and welcome people in for events. Thank you.
Hopefully sooner than later. Thank you so much, Pamela. Do we have any other questions or comments related to our current agenda item? Looking for any hands to be raised? I am not seeing any at this time. So since this is not an action item this evening, we will thank you once again, Katie, for the presentation. And we will move on to our next agenda item this evening. Our next agenda item is to please consider approval of the ascertainment report prepared by NCTV for capital facility and equipment needs. Light, would you mind taking us through this? I'm sorry.
Sure. So we're not letting Katie leave just yet. We still need her. And so this, the second item is an important, also an important part of the process to renewing these licenses. It's it's not required, but it's highly recommended that the the town, or in this case, NCTV, puts together what's called an ascertainment report, which outlines its capital and facility needs that it projects in the next 10 years. And as Katie mentioned a couple of times in her presentation, a lot of equipment doesn't have a long lifespan or it's changing quite a lot. And so NCTV is with Katie's leadership has taken a hard look at what they expect their needs are in the next 10 years. And that's what's included in your packet. So I'd like Katie's here to go over that with you and with the goal that you find it acceptable and approve it. And if you do, then that sets the stage for our office working in concert with NCTV to sit down and negotiate renewal licenses with both of these companies. So with that, I would, it's okay with you toss it over to Katie.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Katie.
Thank you so much. So it's a pretty lengthy document. I don't know if you want me to go through each section and just talk about it a little bit or start with questions. How do you feel?
A high level overview, I think, would be appropriate and then we can take it from there.
Okay. So we have a little bit about NCTV and our programming statistics. So we did a little breakdown of what we've done in the last, you know, almost 10 years. So NCTV has produced 232 programs in 2012 and had a final count of 403 new programs produced in 2019. So that just gives like a, like you said, a high level overview of the growth that we've had since 2012 to 2019. Let's look at part of the facility needs that we have are our capital equipment. So the green room, we started the green room a bit ago. We took over the space next door to our current studio. And we are, we finished the renovations in 2020, of course, during a pandemic is when we got the okay to go in there. But the the idea for this space is to give us some more room so we can have two things happening at the same time. Because right now, if something's happening in our studio, it kind of stops us from being able to do much else. But it's also going to be a space for the community. So we intentionally didn't put a bunch of walls and a bunch of furniture in there so that it can be used for events of all different kinds. We've heard from the community that another space in town that people can utilize has been needed. So that's one of the things that we wanted to do with this room. It also gives us a couple more offices that was needed for staff as well. So this just kind of goes over the construction costs. The the overall renovation was a little over $75,000, which was much more than we expected. But with everything going on, that's what it came out to be. And then we talk a little bit about the ongoing maintenance costs and a second studio upgrade. So if we were to outfit this studio with full cameras and switcher, audio board, all of that, what it would cost to add those additions in there. But that also gives us another space where we can record. So if we have performances, you know, debates, whatever it is, we can utilize that space as well. So we were asking for $40,000 to update the room with equipment. As for the main studio that we currently have, the flooring is in pretty drastic need of replacing. So we're looking for $15,000 for that flooring and the air conditioning unit. Especially in light of COVID, there's there's, it's not the best unit that we could, that we could have. And it needs to be replaced both for its loudness. We actually have to turn off our air conditioning when we film because it gets very, very loud. So in the summer, you can imagine that it heats up pretty quickly. And then it's we need to have a system that has fresh air intake so that we can have some fresh air in our in our space because right now it is recycled air. So we're asking for $20,000 to replace that unit. Onto government meeting coverage, we talk about the boards that we regularly cover, which would be the advisory committee, B1 zoning working committee, Board of Health, Select Board, Kongkong, Norfolk School Committee, Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Oh, sorry, there's more. Public, public safety, town government study committee, town meeting, community preservation as needed, recreation as needed, and other boards by request. So we don't have anything specific that says, saying that these are the boards we have to cover. This is just what we have been covering and we're always open to covering other boards as well, either by the boards themselves or if community members request boards to be covered. We've really stepped up our government coverage in the last few years. And we say yes if we can. And that's our our big thing is we, if we have the manpower to do it and the cameras to do it, then we will. So we talk a bit about the importance of government coverage, both for community members and subscribers as well as town boards. We've heard from many different people that it's it's extremely helpful to have these recordings, even though they're not considered the official record of a meeting. It's really nice to have that ability to look back and we have all of the recordings there on YouTube. We have them in our office. So sometimes someone will say, hey, I'm looking for a meeting from 2011 and I can't find it. We can track it down and send it over to them. So that's really helpful to be able to to have that access. And town board members have also commented on how useful it is to be able to look back and say, I don't remember. Did I say this or did I say that? Or what were the action items? And or if there's two boards meeting the same night, which happens pretty frequently, they can catch up on the other board as well without waiting for minutes to be approved, which usually takes until the next meeting to do so. We talk about our current system and the shortcomings in 124, which is actually being replaced next week. So this might have to be adjusted a bit. However, it will need to be replaced again over a 10-year license. So it's still relevant whether we replace it now or not. But we talked about how, especially in light of COVID, we need a system that can accommodate hybrid meetings, which we did not have. The system that is there is functional, but it is not very robust and it would not handle a hybrid meeting. So that's why we're, we pushed that forward a bit to get that done now so we can accommodate that as we still are dealing with this COVID situation. We also talked about future expansion. Because there are multiple meetings in a night, we typically will have one meeting in 124 where we can use all of our PTZ cameras and have the microphones there, which gives better audio. Be able to have titles so we can identify the meeting as well as the different topics that are coming up as they're being discussed. It just makes it a lot smoother of a process. So we talked about potentially adding a smaller scale system in another room in town hall in order to accommodate multiple meetings in a night. So we were looking for $15,000. Oh, I'm sorry, for $35,000 for, oh, I'm sorry, 35 was for the, for 124. $15,000 was for the future expansion. My apologies. For technology upgrades, the biggest thing that we are looking for with Comcast is to upgrade our INET. So right now, the system that Comcast has in place to send the signal of our channel is called an INET and it's very old and it breaks very frequently. The other problem that we have is the equipment. So when we have something break, they replace it with a different box. But tho- those boxes are not being made anymore, so they are recycled equipment and they continue to break. So we're asking Comcast to upgrade the network to fiber, which is the current technology. And it would have pieces of equipment that will function to to just put it out there. We've had, I document all of the issues that we have with Comcast and their tech is great. We love working with him. We just wish we didn't have to see him so much. So we're really hoping that that will go through for for this. For our playback, we are seeking $86,000 for two replacements of playback systems during the upcoming license renewal. Playback computers are very expensive. However, what we have right now, we have the Castis Quickroll. Castis has been amazing. They are fairly new to the market, but we've had them since 2017 and I have had very little problems with them. And their equipment is far less expensive than some of the other players on the market. And we've been very, very happy with their service. So our budget for that is a little smaller than what it could be if we went for a different system. But so we're asking for $86,000 for two replacements within the 10-year license. We're also looking to change our on-demand model. So right now we utilize YouTube, which does have its its benefits. But some of the drawbacks of YouTube is that if you, like, one of the issues we had was when we were trying to do a performance with Excel Dance. Because even though they, we have to have the rights to perform with the music, if YouTube hears music like that, they will shut it down. They'll shut down the stream so that we can't put up the video. So that's one of the flaws that we have with them with their strict copyright guidelines. Some of the other stuff we have, we had a show that that took pieces of movies and analyzed how the religious themes that were in them. And it's considered fair use for television. However, it would shut it down because there's movie clips in it. So this future model that we're looking at, it's actually through Castis. They have their own video on demand service and there's a lot of benefits. The one that I think that the board is going to be excited about is that we can or I can't think of what the word is, but we can make it so that the video has chapters, basically. So you can click on it and it'll go right to that section of the board meeting. So we can actually have that separated out. So people will spend less time scrolling through, trying to find the part that they needed to listen to and be able to go right to it, which will be amazing. We've had a lot of requests for that. So this will be really fantastic. But it also will archive our footage in a different way. We'll also be able to offer downloads through that system. So people could pay what, you know, five, $10 for a download of a video instead of us having to send it to them through another method. They can go right to the website and do it from there. So that's one of the things that we've been looking for. And that is about $51,000 for 10 years of payments for this video on demand system. For studio equipment, we are looking at our studio that's in the office with our control room equipment and computer equipment. And all of that together totals about $282,000 for the 10-year license period. And we have that all broken down later in a in a chart for you guys. You can see specifically what we're planning on for each year. And it's our best guess because 10 years is kind of a long time to plan for equipment where technology is changing so quickly. But based on what we're doing now, that is what we're looking at. And there are some items that are level service and there are a few that we're looking to add on, like we have value of our productions, but it's not necessarily, we don't have one right now. So it wouldn't necessarily be a level service budget for that. For field equipment, again, we need tripods, cameras, microphones, all of those necessary things for us to film anything. So we're looking for about $58,200 for all of that over the 10-year license. And then about $7,000 for a drone that we're crossing our fingers for. Wireless infrastructure, we also very much need an intercom system. We even have gone, like, most of the time we'll use text messaging or something to to talk to each other during town meeting. If we need a different angle or we figured out some hand signals. But a wireless intercom system would really increase the productivity that we can do. It'll allow us to have multi-camera shoots more often than what we currently do. And that's about $15,000 for an intercom system. And then we also talked about wireless transmitters and data plans. So this would allow us to broadcast from anywhere. So right now we can broadcast with a single camera and a laptop if we have an internet connection. But this would allow us to do so more easily and from anywhere. It includes data plans, which would use cell networks to be able to broadcast video instead of using Wi-Fi or an Ethernet plug. And that's about $3,000 for those. So overall, for the next 10 years, the capital costs that we're anticipating needing is $603,700. For Comcast, they provide about 46.79% of the subscribers with Verizon providing cable to 53.21%. So with that, the $600,000 would be what we are asking from in total. So the percentage that we're asking specifically from Comcast would be 2,000, sorry, $282,471.23. And then the rest of the document is some attachments about the different statistics that I mentioned before, as well as the more in-depth capital budget. And that's all I have unless there's questions.
That's it? No, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for the detail. It was very telling. You know, I think the thing that jumped out the most to me was the the last graph that you showed, the subscriber count in 2002. It says that, you know, this past year we were at 3,007 total subscribers. That number hasn't been that low since it looks like 2011. So clearly, as Blake had mentioned earlier on, you know, there is an ongoing trend for people to ditch cable in in light of the other streaming services that are out there. And we just have to remain cognizant of what that does in terms of impacting the funding for NCTV. So thank you for including that and going through that in such detail. At this time, I'll toss it around to the rest of the board for any questions or comments, starting with Anita.
No, that was a lot of work. So thank you very much for such a thorough presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cece?
No, no questions and ditto to what Anita said, per usual. I'm usually echoing Anita. So yeah, that was amazing. And and as Anita said, that's a lot, a lot of work. I'm confident that a ton of man hours went into that. So well done.
Thank you.
Before we make our motion, I'll open it up to anybody in attendance this evening for any questions related to the ascertainment reports. If you do have any questions, please feel free to use the raise hand function at this time. I am seeing no hands, no waving, no sign language, nothing. All right. So with that, I will move that the board vote to approve the ascertainment report prepared by NCTV for capital facility and equipment needs. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mclember, aye.
And that is a unanimous vote. Thank you so much again, Katie. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us.
All right. Our next item this evening is to please consider several matters regarding street signs. Wow, Blake, there is a lot here. Please feel free to go ahead.
There is a lot here and a very important topic. So we've got three items. One is to talk about replacements of street signs, as we've talked about at a previous meeting. The second is specifically, we've got some new recommendations about the signs at the base of Sharon Avenue at Route 1A for the police station. Some frustration about how those not easy to see and not not providing great direction. So we've got some new thoughts on that. And then separately, we have the renewal of various directional signs in town, a process that we've been undertaking for many years. But to start out, after our last conversation, both DPW, both Blair Crane Director and Barry Lurie, I can never get your name right, Barry. I'm tongue twisted tonight, sorry, have put together a presentation about street signs in general that I think will give you some great background about why we need to do this, what the rules are, what the options are. that I think will give you some great background about why we need to do this, what the rules are, what the options are. And the goal would be that we, that the board can reach a conclusion about which color of sign it prefers for Norfolk. Because we do have a couple of signs that need to be put up, a new street, obviously Sharon Avenue. And we need to adopt a new standard. So with that, I'd recommend that we could toss this over to Blair or Barry to go through that short presentation with you.
Thank you so much, Blithe, and welcome, gentlemen. Blair, you have the coziest looking Zoom room I've ever seen in my life. So please feel free to take it away.
Thank you, sir. You know, Barry and I have spent a lot of time, you know, mulling this over. We understand how important these street signs are to the town of Norfolk, and they are certainly unlike any street signs I've seen anywhere in the country. That being said, you know, we have to look at a lot of different factors. Cost is obviously one of them. You know, we go by a manual, what's called an MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which kind of sets a national standard so that motorists in Norfolk know what a street sign looks like, the same as if they were in Florida, Texas, or California. So there is a standard here. Barry has put together a a PowerPoint here, which will certainly go into a little more detail. And if the board would like, we can circle back around and answer questions afterwards.
Absolutely. Just who would be the presenter? Would that be Barry?
Yeah, Kevin, if you want to show your screen, I can run the PowerPoint.
You are co-host now, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. So just this, just to start off, here's some different sign images that we have throughout town. As much as everybody thinks that our standard signs are the white posts with the black letters, we actually have about twenty five different types of signs in town. The one on Sharon Ave, which you can't even see, two ornamental signs on Diamond Street and several other locations. So I'll give you a little overview, regulatory compliance, the federal compliance and the MUTCD compliance. We have some sign examples. Our sign replacement methodology and some costs for us to consider. So traffic signs are a critical elements of the highway because they communicate the rules, warnings, guidance, and other highway agency information that drivers need to safely, efficiently navigate roads and streets. Well maintained signs are important as they help drivers make good decisions. While there's much to be said about the design, placement, operation, and maintenance of signs, oh, sorry. There are a few key principles that are critical for traffic signs to be effective. As with any traffic control device, a traffic sign should meet five basic requirements stipulated in the MUTCD. Namely fulfill a need, command attention, convey a clear, simple meaning, command respect from the road users, and give adequate time for proper response. So these are the things that we need to consider moving forward. As much as we like the the white posts that Norfolk has, we need to consider, do they fulfill a need? Do they command attention? Do they convey a clear, simple meaning? So these were standards set forth in the MUTCD for signs. Now, federal highway. Back some years ago, the federal highway mandated excuse me, that agencies require are required to implement an assessment or management method for maintaining the sign reflectivity. Without specific compliance date, agencies will still need to replace any sign they identify as not meeting the established minimum retro reflectivity levels. Moreover, any sign that is out of general compliance with any other requirements, MUTCD should just be replaced. So when this originally came out in two thousand and seven, they wanted towns to have benchmark dates to replace all their signs. The federal highway quickly realized that it was a daunting task for most communities. It removed all the date requirements, instead left it open ended, but still required the town to replace any signs that didn't meet retro reflectivity standards. Coming out of this, I got a touchy mouse tonight. So it was, it's been asked by a lot of people, you know, why are we doing this? So the failure to comply with the federal highway retroactivity regulation can lead government agencies susceptible to lawsuits from drivers or the families who suffer injury or death attributable to substandard sign retro reflectivity maintenance. The impetus to the to this was to have all signs, standard size, standard letters, standard colors. So it's like Blair said, so if you're in Michigan or you're in Massachusetts, you know what a street sign looks like. The MUT, now this is a little background on the MUTCD. The MUTCD is a document containing the design and usage specifications of all street signs, traffic signals, and surface markings. Among other things, it lists specific colors, fonts, shapes, and formatting to which street signs must adhere. So the federal highway comes out with the standards. MUTCD is the guidance that municipalities and other agencies use to put up the right signs. All street name signs must feature a combination of both uppercase and lowercase letters, so we don't meet that. The first letter of the street name sign should be uppercase with the preceding letters all being lowercase. The federal highway advocates that street name signs featuring a combination of uppercase and lowercase letters are easier for drivers to read than those featuring all uppercase. So there's been several iterations of this process. People remember, I believe it was back in two thousand two, two thousand three, the street name sign, the the text changed. It was an uppercase letter with lowercase letters. Now they've established all uppercase. Sign height, the sign of the the sign size depends on where the street name sign will be used. Local roads that have a speed limit of twenty five miles an hour or less have a six inch sign, so they're smaller. Roads with speed limits greater than twenty five miles an hour have a nine inch tall letter. That would be the standard for Norfolk. Norfolk will be nine inch tall signs with six inch uppercase letters and four to five to four to four to four, four and a half inch lowercase letters. The only colors for street name signs that can be used are brown, green, white, and blue. Now I have some examples of those to share. So here's a mockup that we've put together. Blair and I went around and around it for a little while and actually talked to a lot of our colleagues. You see a lot of town seals are in color on the street signs. The color logo tends to fade faster. So we did a mockup with a black and white logo on a brown sign. A black and white logo on a green sign. Looks like the presentation kind of blew the the font size. Sorry about that. Let me switch to a PDF. Yeah, there's a little bit better. So you can see, here's an example, the Sharon Ave on brown, Sharon Ave on green.
Hey Barry, I think that's on a different screen for you because we can't see what you're looking at.
Oh, you can't see that one, Kev? Do I have to reshare? You can see, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yeah, we saw the PowerPoint. You might have just been sharing the window and not your desktop.
Yeah, you are correct. That's what I was doing. How's that? Better? All right. Yeah, the, for some reason, the PowerPoint was cutting off the Sharon Ave. So let's start from the beginning here. So we have the brown, the green, the black and white, and the blue. So those are the only colors and and letter combinations that we can use. So as for our replacement methodology, how are we going to go about doing all this? The we will, we're probably looking at doing a phased approach over time on an as needed basin, basically replacement signs are damaged, etc. The idea was to replace signs in conjunction with roadway projects. When we pave the roads, we will replace the signs. Street name signs and arterial collectors, so your main roads, like Main Street, for example, would be two signs per post. So the example we were talking about the other night would be Main Street at Lake Street. There'd be a sign for Lake Street and a sign for Main Street. Street name signs on local roads and cul-de-sacs and dead ends would only be one sign per post. This is a little map you can kind of see in yellow, would be all the streets that would have a two signs at every intersecting street. All the other streets in town would be local roads with one sign per street. Now let's get into the cost of it. So I did a little research and went back over time, and it looks like this whole thing started in nineteen ninety six. It was initially started with a wood post with paint, hand painted wood post with hand painted letters. The town was paying roughly a hundred and sixty six dollars per location. At some point in the two thousands, they changed to the PVC post with a wood four by four under the PVC post, lettered and installed. It was two hundred and eighty dollars per location. That's what has been going on for the last few years. But now Blair and myself, the last, I've been here nearly two years now. We have not replaced any of the street name signs. So we have a stockpile of of broken and messed up signs at the DPW that we have not replaced yet. So looking at what it's going to cost to replace the street name signs townwide. So the sign will roughly be thirty six inches long by nine inches high. But the the sign length will actually vary based on the street name. So Ash Road will be smaller than Meeting House. That's going to be a pretty large sign. So the cost could change a little bit there. We were looking at a green post with a green anchor bracket and a specific mount that mounts on the top of the post to hold the sign. Per location, single side, it's ninety dollars. Every location that is two signs, it's about a hundred and twenty seven dollars. And that could be adjusted a little bit because I have to account for the bracket that goes on top of the sign. So rough numbers, main streets with two signs per pole is about a hundred and ninety locations. Secondary streets with one sign per pole is about a hundred and eighty seven locations. So roughly three hundred and seventy five locations for a total cost of forty one thousand dollars. And this is just the street name signs. This isn't replacing regulatory signs, warning signs, or guide signs, which we also have to do. Now, we presented this to the planning board, and they had some comments that we thought were interesting. So if anybody's noticed recently on Union Street, we've replaced the speed limit sign and add, actually added some new pedestrian warning signs. And they have a reflective strip at the bottom of them. The planning board liked the idea of the reflective strip. Unfortunately, that adds thirty six dollars to every location. So our idea was basically installing the reflective reflective strip at the main street locations and not at the secondary location, secondary street locations. So that keeps the single side at ninety dollars and then raises the cost per double sign location to a hundred and sixty three. Increase the cost a little bit to forty eight thousand dollars, and that's adding the reflective strip on those main road locations. I think that's pretty much hitting all the highlights of it. I don't know if you have any questions or any other information that I could give you. I'd be happy to.
Thanks, Barry. Really appreciate you going through that. And the visuals were incredibly helpful in being able to picture what you were talking about. A few questions I have. The first one is related to the post color. It sounded like that does not coordinate with the sign color, that it will be green regardless of what sign color we pick.
No, we were going with the green on green when we designed it. I actually, we have, we have actually had a couple of mockups. I don't know if people can see it, but I brought it home with me. I don't think I could fit it on the screen. But I can actually drop it by the, drop it by the town hall so people can see it. We went with the green on green because it looked nice. I could get probably hindsight thinking about it is the green is going to be powder coated. It could break off and the paint could crack off. So we probably go with a standard metal post that you like, you see like we just did on Union Street. It's a galvanized steel post.
Gotcha. Okay. And the second question was related to the the logo or the town seal on the sign. You said that you didn't like the color because you you found that it faded more often than not. But it was a possibility. If we did go that route, did it add to the cost at all?
I don't know because we didn't spec that out. I can look into that to see if the color, this is just based on experience, Kevin. I mean, you'll see it driving around. I've talked to other DPW directors in the community. That that color tends to fade quicker than the sign. So you have this really great sign that patches retro reflectivity. And you got this old degraded town seal next to it. So it kind of takes away from the look of it. But I don't think it'd be, I don't think it'd be much more of a cost, or it probably could be the same cost for the sign.
Gotcha. And I'll ask you one more before I toss it around to the rest of the board. Actually, it's more of a comment than anything else. You know, you mentioned the reflectors. I was listening in on that planning board meeting when they were talking about it. And I kind of agree with Walter in that it's our side streets that might see the most benefit out of those reflectors versus our main street. We have a couple of real dark streets in our town that would probably really benefit from having those reflectors on the base of those street signs. So I think I'd be more inclined to put them there actually than putting them on the main streets, but open for other opinions and perspectives on that.
I totally understand you, but I think the bottom line here is we all know it's going to come down to the cost and how much the town is willing to fund us over time so we can get this done. You know, this should have been started in two thousand and seven. Even the even the last date of adjusting the the requirements was twenty eighteen. So we're already way out of compliance. We really need to get going on this as soon as we can.
And you said how many signs you had in the queue to replace immediately?
Right now, we we, I have, we we were talking about a handful of streets to start replacing on. Really, I wanted to do Main Street because we paved it this year. We figured, hey, we paved Main Street. Let's get the signs up. Everything kind of went to the halt when the color discussion came up. And then in between, looking at that and the discussion we're having with you guys, we've had to buy more signs. So my sign budget is decreasing by the second. Right now, the the major sign we have to have to install is for, it's off of Day Street, red some circle.
Redwood Circle.
Yeah, Redwood Circle. So they, we basically cut a deal with the planning board. We would help them out by putting that sign in. So that would be the first one officially going up in town. And then from there, as budget allows, we could start replacing other signs.
Gotcha. Well, we do appreciate you taking the time to go through this with everybody so we can ensure that the path we go is something that, you know, everybody in the community can get on board with. Is really important for the look and the feel. So appreciate you putting it on hold while we went through this. So with that, I'll toss it around to the rest of the board. Thoughts, questions, comments, starting with Cece?
All right. So I have a couple of questions. So and forgive my ignorance. And I'm gonna, I have it on my little iPad. So I'm sort of scrolling back and forth between what you provided in your overview. So for folks scoring at home, I'm toggling back and forth scrolling back and forth between the FHWA Federal Highway Administration Regulatory Compliance and the MUTCD compliance language. And a couple of questions that I first have is, so I note that, as you indicated, the highway administration does not require that any sign be replaced by a given date. So when you're opining about the two thousand and seven and the two thousand and eighteen dates, I assume you're talking more about signs that are not currently in compliance, that are sort of generally mandated to be fixed if, as, and when they fall out of compliance?
No, so the the, I just wanted to give a little history on the dates. The dates are all thrown out the window.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so two thousand and seven, the federal highway standard was to start replacing your street signs. Twenty fourteen was to establish a sign inventory in a program. And then twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen, it was a due regulatory warning and all the other signs. So it started with street signs, then it removed, then it moved the entire gannet. And like I was saying, so the federal highway kind of realized that towns and cities couldn't accomplish by the sheer amount of signs and what it would cost. There was no city or town that could meet these deadlines. Um, so they relaxed all the dates, but still made it a requirement.
Okay, so I get that. I just was wondering why you were saying other than just sort of generally things needed to get fixed, why you were saying, since they got rid of the dates, that currently the dates aren't an issue, why you were saying that we were way overdue? If, like, what other than the dates makes us overdue since the dates don't apply?
Well, because we haven't in mint, we never implemented um, the the inventory and replacement program, which was the number one requirement. So we had to know where all our signs were and how we were going to replace them. Uh, that had never been done. Um, so we're cut, we're implementing that now and now we're establishing our replacement program.
Okay.
It's a very loose program. Um, as long as we can say, hey, we're going to replace every time we pave a road, we're going to replace a sign, that's good enough. Or we're going to start with all the main streets, that's good enough. We just have to have to have a program in place.
Then Barry, I would like to add also that uh, the sign posts that we have out there now are uh, uh, are not br- breakaway posts as would be mandated going forward. Uh, the wooden posts do not have a a stress point in the base of them, so they aren't breakaways, which is uh, certainly a safety issue.
So that's a secondary question and I'll get to the issue with our signs versus the statutes in a second. But my first question was whether or not this, the idea that the dates were problematic was just more of a general observation, which seems to be that we need to fix things. Um, given the fact that when I read this and from your very clear um, statements, the, at least as far as the Federal Highway Administration was concerned, they were no longer mandating as, as Barry said, uh, because it would be like a nightmare that people do the fixing by a particular date. So that question to the side, you then um, were talking about retro reflectivity.
Yes.
And I then Googled retro reflectivity. It's not the easiest word to pronounce.
No, it's not.
And um, I learned that the definition essentially is that it's something if the light hits it, it reflects back.
Yes.
Um, retro reflectivity makes sense, right? I'm assuming based on riding bicycles and looking at signs and listening to your um, beach, that one can purchase lettering or treatments or that type of thing that can make anything retro reflective um, with limits, right? But we're talking about signs, not like an elephant or something. And so I'm wondering if, um, and I'm not talking right now about all of the other structural issues with the sign. I'm just talking about retro reflectivity, which seems to be the MUTCD's first issue, or rather the FHWA's first issue. Whether or not you priced out fixing or updating or upgrading or whatever was necessary to the current white signs, the retro reflectivity.
No, because they, we can't do it on the current signs. Um, we wouldn't meet the letter regulation. Um, so we have to.
I'll get to the letter regulation in a sec. So that was just my question was, I guess it was sort of a yes or no. So no, nobody priced that out.
No.
What I would think would be that to your point that you're, as you're doing a road or if you see a sign that's completely a nightmare, you're going to fix that one first. And by fixing it, you're going to remove it and replace it. Uh, one could imagine that you could remove and replace it with a sign with caveats to the other issues that I'm sure you're going to discuss. Um, that was also a post with retro reflective black lettering. Arguably retro reflective black lettering that had uppercase and lowercase letters. But I read that the FHWA advocates that street name signs feature a combination of uppercase and lowercase letters. And I wonder if advocate and mandate aren't different terms. And then I see you've got pictures of signs that are the mandated colors and it's clear that they are mandated. And it includes white with black. And and I know it seems silly that tho- there are folks like myself who think that these signs kind of make us a little bit more Norfolk. And I am certainly cognizant of the um, admin, you know, the the, what you've said in here about uh, the fact that if we don't fix the retro reflectivity, um, or uh, make the signs more um, capable of breaking. I know there was a better word than that with accident proof, crush proof. So that when you hit it, um, your car doesn't collapse in on itself. But in the, in as much as we're not replacing them, except um, as we sort of come upon really bad ones, I just wonder what the difference in cost would be to come up with a sign that is modeled after what we currently have with letters that are retro reflective. And even though I still think advocate is not the same as mandate, even with upper and lowercase letters, if that was the uh, the case. So I just, I was just hoping that I would hear that, um, oh yeah, we we priced that out and in order to put the letters vertically rather than horizontally, but it's prohibitively expensive. Um, so um, so I guess that's it. So I understand the final piece was that in terms of the structure, the current signs, uh, if you careen into it, would be like hitting a brick wall, there's no sort of breakaway.
Yeah, the the biggest problem with the current sign is the wooden post um, could break and shear through the windshield and hurt somebody. Um, I mean, to to answer your question, why we didn't look at any of this stuff, uh, why can't we change what we have? Um, because we can't. It doesn't meet MUTCCD standards. It doesn't meet mass DOT standards. Um, so the federal highway puts forth the regulations. The MUTCD is the guidance we follow on the sign types.
And so where, I guess that's what I'm asking, right? Because I get, right? I understand you want your signs to be retro reflective. And I understand that you want them to be structurally um, sort of in compliance with what the engineers deem to be safe for folks traveling on the road. Uh, but I also understand that within the uh, that paradigm, you're not changing them all right away. So you're going around and picking the ones that need it most first, or that you happen to be fixing other things on the street. And so it makes sense first. And if it's going to be a slow roll, so that not every sign is going to be safe in your definition or in the federal or the state government's definition, what other, what what am I missing? I guess maybe it's just because you've told me that the color is fine. Um, I feel like, a- and I got nothing to back this up with, so I'll be very clear that I am not the expert on any of this. That's why I'm asking. But it feels like I don't see anything that prevents us from at least sort of exploring it. Um, I just am being told, well, but that's what the federal government says. But when you, the piece that you gave me on the federal government says, we're not going to mandate that you do it by a particular time. We are going to mandate that you follow MUTCD guidelines. Okay, great. I I went to law school. I know that that means I got to go to the MUTCD guidelines, right? That's who I'm supposed to be following. That tells me sign height and that may be where the issue is. Because I don't get spatial stuff, so I I think twelve inches is thirty feet. And I get sign color, sign color I get, but we are in compliant with sign, compliance with sign color. So I just, I feel like, and I'm not saying, oh, it's never going to happen and we're all going to pick it. But I feel like I'm not the only person that these signs are important enough to, that it shouldn't just be some sort of a unilateral, hey, we're going to just change them. It's position. That maybe there should be a little bit more information that we looked at vertical signs and in order to replace, because this is probably what it is, right? If you're thinking about in terms of a plastic cylinder or whatever, square version of a cylinder is, um, vertical sign that in order to replace, you know, to do sign for sign, vertical or versus like your average sign that you're showing us, it's going to be seventy percent more expensive. If that's the answer, I I I'll be like, see you bye, old, old timey Norfolk. It needs to be the least expensive, but I just don't, I'm not there yet. So that's where.
I I got two more, two more parts to it. So the other issue is there is a vertical compliance to this. The sign height needs to be a minimum, a minimum of seven feet to the top of the asphalt. So there is a vertical requirement. The other thing too is, hey, if if the town could give us the forty-eight thousand dollars tomorrow, we'll go knock it out and get it done. But looking at our capital plan and our budgeting, we have to chunk a bit, a little bit this off at a time. Um, so going back to that, so the other thing that kind of is driving this as well is we have a lot of signs in town that don't meet the height regulation. They're too low to the ground. So they need to be a minimum of of seven feet. Six to seven feet depending upon uh, the location of it, if it's on a sidewalk or near a roadway.
Right.
So, so that kind of defaults, the reason why we can't have the vertical posts. Uh, they don't meet that height limit.
Can I jump in for a minute? I think there's also the issue of, I understand trying to make the letters on the white signs, current signs retro reflective. But it's also that the whole sign itself, the background has to be reflective too. And so I think it would be, I don't, I don't know what it would cost, but it seems to me it would almost be more wasteful to try and go out and fix all those. Knowing they don't meet these other requirements, only to someday replace them again sooner than we'd otherwise need to. It's almost seems better to s- slowly, you know, budget a little bit every year to take care of these with what they're supposed to be.
Though I must not have been clear and that happens, I was not suggesting that we fix the current signs.
I'm sorry.
Suggesting that as they are suggesting, if as and when a sign needs to be fit replaced, it be replaced with sort of the newer, more modern version of what's currently there, just as initially, as Barry indicated, in the nineties, it was old timey wood. And now is, you know, basically still wood with like a sleeve that looks like somebody went to Home Depot and did it, but whatever. So now my question was, if we are exploring going to the next inculcation of town signs, what would it cost to make the current signs? And maybe it would be prohibitively expensive and I, the height is a different issue. Um, you know, because if you're saying producing just like a sign like, like this, like the ones in various um, demonstration and powder coating that whole sign, that's going to be a lot less expensive, I would imagine, than doing the entire sort of tube, for lack of a better word. And I understand from Barry, what Barry's saying, I don't see that here. So I do see that there are sign height requirements, but I see that they're tied to speed limit, which obviously would be also.
I I had, I I mistakenly uh, took that out. I had it in the original draft I had done.
Oh, I don't mean that. I'm not saying it doesn't, that that's not also there. I was just looking at the the sign height relative to speed and wondering if it was feasible. And so I just, again, I'm being told it's not feasible. And I'm also being told we didn't look at it. And I'm being told that we need to do it by replacing the current signs if as and when it crops up. And I agree. I'm just saying, perhaps you at least, we at least could say, yeah, no, and it wouldn't work because i- if the sign has to be seven feet, and I'm assuming you mean seven feet, like it, which would belie the whole idea of the vertical.
It has to be seven feet so someone can walk underneath it and not whack their head. Um, I mean, basically what we have here is, is it's not.
Are you T C? And are you just using that as like a, an example of what seven feet is? Or is there something in the statute that says I should be able to walk under a sign?
Yep, there is, there is guidance in the MUTCD with diagram. It's all requirements on how high every sign needs to be from the asphalt or the sidewalks to the bottom of the sign.
And Barry, I would like to also add, you're, you had two hundred and eighty dollars per PVC post installed uh, back when uh, certainly uh, quite a few years ago, uh, not in two thousand and twenty dollars. Uh, multiplied by three hundred and seventy-seven signs over time puts your three hundred and seventy-seven overall, puts you at a hundred and five thousand, five sixty, which is a considerable cost before adding uh, retro reflectivity or any uh, any of the other decals that we might add to it. So just a, just as a starting baseline, I would say that's uh, a a bottom number there without going further.
But I feel like, and I don't mean to be so oppositional, but I, I don't know if maybe it's, that's what it costs then. Is there, because we're, wouldn't necessarily be using the same now because you wouldn't want it, your Jetta to like crumple into it. Would there be something that's less expensive that's actually more efficacious?
Well, but the problem is is.
I feel like everybody's just made, it just feels to me like everybody made the assumption that, yeah, we should probably do this and no, that probably won't work. And we're just going to do it. And when there was a human cry from people like me, we were then told, well, but that's what the statute says. But when I'm looking at the statute, it, it, I I just need someone to connect the dots for me a little better, is all I'm.
I mean, I I highlighted on the screen, so this, this is, this relates to the statute that you can dig into. Um, I've done this work in over seventy-five other communities. Um, the standard is federal highway, um, the MUTCD and mass DOT. Um, those are the standards everybody uses. The, those are the design standards that everybody is required to go by. Um, so that is why we have not explored any other options, but the ones in front of us, the ones that we're required to explore and install for the signs.
Okay, well, you highlighted something that said that you have to implement in assessment or management. You spoke earlier about the fact that you had already done that. So.
No, we haven't done, we're in the process of.
You just said that you had, but it's neither here nor there. I'm not going to fight everybody on it. I'm telling you how it feels to people like me. That's all I'm telling you and you're not going to get me to change my position. I'm telling you what it feels, right? That's it. So I'm on with my questions.
So Cece, from your perspective, um, y- your, your desire here to be able to bridge this gap from your perspective would be to to hear of an outline that identifies, you know, if we were to bring these changes forward to what we have currently in place, what would that cost be associated or compared against bringing in the proposal that's currently before us? So that you'd be able to identify that i- it simply from a financial perspective isn't feasible. Is that what you're requesting at this point?
It's twofold, right? So on the one hand, and 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 I've been sort of touched upon it toward the end. If the reality really is that it is, that there is some prescription against a vertical sign, well, then we're dead in the water. But like, nobody came to like, chapter four oh six point one three two, you may never have a vertical sign. So that may end my fight, right? If that doesn't exist, then yeah, if, then it would just be, hey, don't tell me that, or please don't tell me that twenty-one years ago PVC piping was X, Y, and Z and because of inflation, it's probably prohibitively expensive. Go and say, hey, you know, dear Mr. Retro Reflective Company, what would it cost to do this? Including, and I'm mindful of it, would have to include that on these sixteen streets, the sign's going to have to be this much bigger. And and whatever, include all of it and and come back and say, yeah, the new signs are going to cost thirty thousand over time or whatever. And the old, and to to do what you want is going to cost a hundred and five thousand. And that seventy-five thousand um, is A, money we don't have, or B is money that we could spend on potholes. And I will be like, alright, see you later, bye. It just, it felt like, and I know that the, it wasn't the intent. I'm telling you that it felt like this wasn't explored and people such as myself were like, whoa, 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 wait a minute. So yeah, so if, if I could either see, um, because I I mentioned it last time, but what I ended up getting was kind of more of the sort of the overview type of thing that again, can be helpful, but the folks who write the overviews aren't necessarily, aren't necessarily the folks who wrote statutes. And so the language can be imprecise. So when I see somebody's advocating or advising, I don't think advocating or advising are are mandatory, uh, but maybe they are, right? Maybe that's the issue. I just need someone to show me the actual reg, and I know Barry said he would, that says, yeah, yeah, it's just an impossibility. Because right now I'm just seeing stuff that isn't. So either show me a complete impossibility, doesn't have to be tonight, or show me um, that we only, we got five, you know, five steps into the fifteen step process to replace these old signs and we're already twice as much money or we're the same money and it, and and either way, either or both. But right now it just feels like um, sudden and not enough information for me, just me, my own opinion. May I jump in?
Thank you, Cece. Yeah, go right ahead, Eider.
So um, I I was listening to Cece and first of all, thank you for your presentation and thank you for um, doing the thoughtful work that we need to.
doing the thoughtful work that we need to move forward. And so I appreciate that there needs to be change. I, I'm just going back to the last, our last meeting, or maybe it was five meetings ago, it's all kind of blurry in terms of time. But when we first talked about changing the signs, we had an emotional reaction from all three select board members. And while we're not three out of the 12,000 of Norfolk, we're not statistically significant. It is definitely going to be, I think what CC is kind of getting at, and I, and I hear her, is that this is going to be, I mean, it's just a thing, we're changing the signs, but I think that this is, is going to be something that people react to. And so I think that, first of all, as select board members, if you change the signs, we're gonna take a ton of, I have to watch my language, right? Because this is probably, we're gonna take, we're gonna get some feedback, let's put it that way, about this. And so it is helpful to us as board members to say, we are changing the signs because to do it like this costs an extra jillion dollars, and so we made a sensible decision for the town. I also got a little panicky and I was thinking about why when Blythe said that she was gonna ask us to choose a color, because I was like, oh my God, the feedback, if we pick brown instead of white, some people are gonna love blue. And I'm wondering if we could manage the emotional response that this is gonna have. First of all, it would be nice, like CC is saying, to have some really concrete thing that we can say to our town, we made a cost, a cost decision that of this. And then I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a Google form on our site that every, every website address in town can vote. So then we can say the town wants it to be blue or green or white, or, and so then I think that that might be something that we can turn, then everybody sees the new signs and they voted for it and, and they felt like they were involved. I don't know. I think that this is gonna be a this is gonna be an issue. You know how town meeting, sometimes you'll vote on something, $2 million, it comes up and we're like, oh, February, well, and then something comes up, it's like $67.52, and we discuss it for 45 minutes. And that's how this town is, and I love that about this town. And so I think this sign is gonna be one of those things, just based on the emotional response of your three board members. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing and I, I'm worried that this is gonna get that kind of blowback because people care a lot about the signs, which speaks well to your department. You made beloved signs that we love. And so it's gonna be hard to change, but we can do it. We can change with you, with your guidance, but I think we need something to say to our public that we made this decision because of this. And then to say that even the color choice, I, I wonder if we shouldn't put that to the town and, and have that reflect, I don't know, I think this could be heated.
Thank you, Anita. And I will agree with you that anything can become heated at a moment's notice when it comes to certain decisions about the look and the feel of the town. You know, I actually reached out to Blythe and I had asked her, hey, do you think there's a benefit to us putting a poll out there or something like that for people to write in and see? She wisely advised against it because there are gonna be people who would not be able to see the poll and then say, well, I wanted to have my voice, voice be heard in this, and I didn't get the opportunity to do that. So we'd have to find a way to be able to let everybody have the same access and opportunity to be able to share their opinion and their feedback. And from my perspective, the only fair way to do that is in a setting of town meeting. Now, we could post and give notice that for our next meeting, we will be talking about this and we'll accept public comment. But that has the potential to go on for about three and a half hours, right? Yeah. So I don't know if that would be necessarily the right way to go either. So then, you know, you find yourself asking yourself, is this just something that we take on a responsibility of as the Board of Select, more to Select Board, to make these decisions for the town with input, obviously, from those that we speak to. And I'm sure that CC was speaking from a place, not only of her own preference, but also of those who she probably speaks to within the community. So it's not just her voice, it's the voice of many who share the same concern. I can tell you that I polled a very intuitive group of people, my three boys at the table, and each of them had a different preference of the sign color. So I imagine that same thing would spread out across the community as well. So I understand the feedback, I understand what everybody's saying. I also understand Barry and Blair's battle here where they're looking to get something in place so they can start the process of having this changeover go on without having to put signs out there that are conceivably going to be worthless, once this decision is made. So with that, Blythe, after hearing the feedback from the board tonight, and understanding the timelines that we're currently working with, what do you feel that we'd be able to do in short order to be able to provide the kind of backup that CC was highlighting in her outline and questions? And be able to feel some resident or town feedback related to a potential decision to move forward?
A couple of things, I think that we can pull together the, the specific language from the regulations about vertical signs. We can attempt to do the cost out that she's requested. And then I can try to, I don't know how to do a, you know, an online poll, but I can Google poll, but I can try to figure that out and get that up there. I did speak to Rich McCarthy, you know, regarding the planning board and the requirement that they, the ones have asked for the redwood circle sign to go up. So that was, that was a near term issue. I think we can wait till the January 5th meeting, but after that, I mean, I think worst case, we at least need to put up the green one that we have just for now, so there is a sign. And then take it and replace it later if, if the color change is different. And I would just echo that, you know, what Barry said earlier, you know, it's never been our intention to go and ask for all the money to go ahead and do any of this now. We would, we certainly appreciate how much people care about the ones that we have. We would replace them in a, in a methodical fashion, so people would keep the ones we have, you know, probably for a while. That's what, that's what I'm suggesting.
Thank you, Blythe. And I think that sounds like it addresses all of the concerns that we've raised here tonight. I would recommend from a technical standpoint, if we were to do something from a poll perspective, that we would find a way to integrate that into the website so that we have one common landing zone for people to access, that we know that people have the ability to access. But we can talk more about the way that that works outside of this forum. CC, does that outline that Blythe just laid out address your concerns?
Sorry, my laptop keeps moving. I'm convinced, I'm sure it's not, but I'm convinced my laptop keeps moving my mute button around. Sure, like I had said, if there, I honestly don't know in terms of ease, if there are statutes that are clear that say, no, 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 vertical, then why bother pricing out vertical? Like, I think that would save you a step. If it is less clear, if it's more vertical's more challenging, la, 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 then, and I don't need it to be town meeting worthy level of, of detail, but you know, what would, whatever is a four foot tall cubic thing covered with this stuff, what would that run? And then that level of price comparison, because to Kevin's point, I don't think that this is something that you need to put to the town. We're elected to make this decision. But I'm elected in my mind to vet the issue and then make a decision. And so, yeah, I would either need complete prescription and then don't bother spending your time on the cost analysis. If it's unclear, if it's gray, then a cost analysis would be great so that I would feel comfortable making, agreeing, you know, who cares, right? I'm just one of three. But if I'm going to say absolutely, and the color's a different issue, I, I like the white. But that, that's a different issue, then I'm comfortable making the decision. And if people wanna come up and yap at, at me, that's fine, right? They do it already. I don't do anything and people are gonna say they don't like you. So that's why they elected us. But I do think that Kevin and Anita is absolutely correct. The people who've sort of come to me, and I'm sure to you guys, surprised by this is part of the reason that I'm sort of looking for the information, but to make it even more complicated than it really needed to be. Yeah, I just would wanna know if it, what the statutes actually say. And then what a rough estimate of the cost would be if the statute is gray.
Thanks, CC. Anita, does that cover your concerns as well? I'm sorry, you're not in my window. Was that a head shake? Yes?
It was a head shake, yes.
Thank you.
I, I like the white too, CC.
Oh, that's easy. We would have been unanimous in that. So that's good to hear.
I think it's, once again, Anita and I agreeing on, on, on stuff, it's so pleasant nowadays, but in any event, the, I think the white, I know I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but in the event that I am proven wrong, which I suspect is where it's going, I just need the data. And we're now deciding on what of the signs. In terms of continuity, just throwing it out there, white with black is continuity. Also, I know that I'm, I'm sure you guys have thought of the fact that green sign on the dark green streets, maybe not the best, but that's, that's a problem for another day.
Design Review Board is also informally waiting on this, and they too pick white.
Yeah, well, see, it's, it's, it's a classy color, just saying. And we're a classy town. Classy with a K, but nevertheless classy.
And especially like Barry said, with the raw metal, with the raw metal post, the white would look sharp, I guess.
Can you vote on that and can be done with it, please? I tried, I tried.
You're totally trying.
Barry, in all seriousness, are you?
We're trying, but no.
Barry, in all seriousness, are you clear as to what we would need to be able to move forward at this point?
Yeah, well, there's definitely documentation, so we'll get that documentation together, and we won't even need to proceed into the pricing costing of it. I could definitely find that.
Thank you. I do believe there are two other components we had to talk about related to this though, right?
Oh, yes.
Kind of sort of.
So, you know, about a year ago, we started to, you know, there were some concerns raised about the fact that it's hard to find the police station, it's up Sharon Avenue, and all there is is a very tiny blue police sign with an arrow at the intersection of 1A. And Barry did some good work with this last year to suggest that, you know, look at some of the options, and at the end of the day, you know, we didn't make any changes, but this year, the DBW was about to have the base of Sharon Avenue repaved, and I said, hold on, timeout. I don't want to not revisit this again before we go and pave it, just in case a solution is to put something in the street itself. So Barry, Blair, and Rich McCarthy all participated with me in looking at this, and we've come up with, we were looking at this from both the cost perspective and what we have to work with out there, given that Route 1A is a state road, and that brings into play a bunch of rules and requirements. We don't have much right of way, if any, on the side of the road, so there were limitations. So we're here tonight also to give you our, our new 2020 look at this and ask for your approval. It would include putting up a much better police sign and replacing the very, very outdated, not not vertical, old Sharon Avenue faded sign. So that's just the, the, the high overview, and I'll leave it to Blair or Barry to give you the details of why we ruled out other ideas and what, what we're thinking of. So take it away, guys.
So we had, out there, we had an existing, it's actually really nice. It's an ornamental, really, it's a wrought iron post. You can barely see the Sharon Ave sign on top of it. That's how faded it is. So our suggestion is, is we're gonna, we have a nice, it's called the safety blue. We wanna basically sand and paint this existing post a blue. And then we've developed a police sign that'll sit on top of it. We'll relocate the police sign and the no truck sign to another spot away from this. So this will really stand out on the corner of Sharon Ave and Denham Street.
Remind me how big it is, Barry, because I think it's much bigger than the one we have.
Oh, yeah. Oh, what was it, Blair? Like 52 inches long? It's like 15 inches high and 48 inches long.
It's at least four feet.
Yeah. It's a big, big sign. It has the, the PD's logo on it, big arrow on it. It's, it's really nice.
And is it retro reflective?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I had to do that.
Everything meets requirements.
And then what we would do is put a new, yet to be determined Sharon Avenue sign on the, what's now the blue post?
Yeah, we kind of moved this over a little bit. I wanted to make this stand out. We had put this in last year. The police sign with the retro strip and a no through trucking sign. We're actually gonna relocate that to the corner a little bit, so this will stand out even more.
And straighten it.
Yes.
So, I mean.
I'm sorry to interrupt, like, very quickly, just for the visual that we're looking at, this isn't to scale, right? You're saying that that will be much larger if it was.
Oh, yeah, this is the, this is a picture, this is photoshopped up and a little PowerPoint action.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
I think, so we also looked at putting like a, a sign in a landscaped bed in the middle of the street. That brought along a whole host of issues that required us to hire an engineer, draw plans, go through the state's bedding process, go through our own planning board process to approve the sign, and that was gonna cost probably tens of thousands of dollars. And, and then that wouldn't even include buying some sign to put there. And another issue with that is that, you know, Sharon Avenue serves not just the police station, it serves the whole industrial park. So putting a big sign in the base of the street would give other people the impression that that's the only thing that's there, when in fact it's not. If you drive up Sharon Avenue, as I know you all have, there is a very nice sign for the police station just before you get to it. So that was part of the decision-making as well. So we're looking for your input and or approval to go ahead with this plan. The only thing that we wouldn't know at this point is what version of street sign for Sharon Avenue itself would go up here as well?
We could, we could, we have a green one, we could put up temporary, that once everything gets hashed out, we could, we can change it over. One of the nice things about, the side company worked with us is Permaline. They're very good with us. I've had a lot of discussions with us. So anything that we've purchased to date, we can actually give back to them and they'll exchange, stage with us for anything we want new moving forward. So it's really no money out of, extra money out of our pockets right now.
So that's our overview, everyone.
Thank you, Barry, Blair, and Blythe. A lot of Bs in there. One of the things that I think I had heard when we got some correspondence related to the police sign was the need for some lighting to be able to highlight the sign. I don't necessarily think people were looking for a neon sign to be installed, but perhaps some kind of spotlight to be able to identify in the dark that that's where that is. Is our position that the retro reflective nature of the new sign will accommodate for that request? Or is there something else that's driving our inability to do that?
No, the, the retro should meet it. We were also, Blair and I were knocking around, we can get some retro tape. We were actually thinking about maybe kind of even wrapping it around the post once we paid it to make it really pop out. What, what I, what I've learned through some of the stuff going through this, a lot of the lighting has to go through the planning board. And then this, this being close, so close to the street right of way, it's literally right in here somewhere. I think a lot of that would trigger state requirements as well. Now, we, we did look at solar options. There, there is a telephone pole nearby. It's just expense, expense, expense. So we were looking at the most cost effective option that we could, we could put out there. I'm, I think we're literally talking a couple hundred bucks here for the sign and paint, and we'll have a, we'll have a nice something new there.
Great, thanks, Barry. At this time, I'll toss this to the rest of the board, starting with Anita.
I guess my only question is, is it a breakaway post?
Nope, this one isn't, but it's farther enough, it's farther enough out of the, it's set back farther from the MUTC minimums that it doesn't need to be.
Thank you. That's all.
CC, any questions?
Couple of quick questions. The first question is, has anybody explored giving this project either to the Boy Scouts for an Eagle Scout project, or the Girl Scouts for a Gold Award project? or the Girl Scouts for a Gold Award project? And the second question is, I've heard a lot of talk in this particular narrative about retro reflective tape. And I'm wondering where one buys that?
I can buy it through my sign dealer, Permaline, and it can be bought on various locations on Amazon, Google, what have you.
Anybody, anybody that makes signage, either vehicle signage or roadway signage would, would have that. It's a 3M product.
I think the only part of the project that possibly could be for a scout would be the painting of the pole. Because I don't know that anyone else can make the sign the way we need it to be made.
So I guess that's my question, because what I'm hearing is, I mean, perhaps that's the issue, right? But if you could purchase retro reflective paint, and I'm hearing that 3M has a product that's available on Amazon for retro reflectivity, the stuff that these guys and do with benches, et cetera, I mean, maybe it's something that they would say, no, thank you. I just was curious, and I understand that we're not talking a lot of money. This isn't about that so much as community involvement. I just wondered if anyone had said, hey, coming up with especially, and I agree with Barry, it's a really nice post. This is what we've got there. It's sort of an historical look and feel. What can you guys do to help, if anything? I was just curious if you had. And you had it, and that's not a problem, no judgment. I was just curious.
Thank you, Cece. And I believe there is one more piece of this, Blake?
So, yes, we were first asked if the board wanted to take action on approving this plan. And then the last thing is that about 20 years ago, the town approved the installation of directional signs around the community. And they are used for places like Four Kicks and Dunkin' Donuts and a couple of companies. And the board's policies call for these to be renewed every year. It seemed to staff that, you know, maybe in the age of everyone having a mobile phone and, and, you know, the ergo GPS directional signs tell you how to get to some of these businesses wasn't necessarily a critical need anymore. And maybe they could be taken down. Some of them are in tough shape. But when we reached out to various businesses, they said, no, we really like to still have them. Even with technology, people find it useful to be able to be driving down, you know, 1A and know they should turn to go to Four Kicks or something like that. So the request tonight is to approve the replacement, excuse me, to approve the renewal of these signed permits, which is an action of the board. It's a $5 renewal fee each year. And so we scripted the motion along those lines. One thing we would do plan to do though is ask some of these companies, some of these signs are rather faded, and I'm going to ask them about providing us with new signs because they were originally supplied by the actual company, business who wanted them to get us new ones so that at least when people do come upon them, they can read them, because they're not necessarily all in good shape. So that's what that, that I was about. It's been more an activity that Nancy and I have been working on with some support from Blair to go out and inventory them all. You'll find that information in your packet.
Thank you, Blythe. I think the only question that I had related to the directional signs was one of the businesses had noted in their reply that they were looking for a larger sign to be posted. And I didn't know if that referenced an older requirement that had since been updated, but their sign hadn't been, or if they were actually requesting us to update the specs. Do you happen to know? I think it might have been Jane &amp; Paul's.
It is Jane &amp; Paul's. And what we've asked them to do is, since they don't open until, you know, later in the spring, that we take the actual size issue up a little later. I'm not sure if it isn't going to need to go to the planning board as well, given that, since it's a bigger sign. But we'll take the time to research that and help them with that before you need to put the sign out.
Great, thank you. Tossing it to the rest of the board for questions and comments related to directional signs, starting with Anita.
I don't have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Cece? None. Very good. Well, at this point, it looks like we are prepared to take a vote on two of the three items presented. I want to thank Blair and Barry for the presentation detail and everything you covered tonight. Thank you so much. Really do appreciate it. I will open it up to anybody in attendance who has any questions or comments on any of the three items that we've discussed related to signage. If you do have a comment or question, please use the raise hand function at this time. I am not seeing any hands at this time. So we will move forward with a couple of motions. First, I move that the board vote to authorize the replacement of the street sign and directional signs at the intersection of Sharon Avenue and Route 1A as recommended. Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Thank you. And as well, I move that the board vote to renew permits for directional signs for the following businesses. Cablean, Dunkin' Donuts Gulf Subway, Four Kick Sports Complex, and Jane &amp; Paul's Farm for 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous as well. Thank you very much again, Barry, Blair. We look forward to hearing back from you guys soon.
Absolutely. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our next item this evening is to please consider approval of a contract between the MECC and the Town of Norfolk for building, maintenance and custodial services. Blythe, some background, please.
Yes, when the MECC was planning to be opened, they're located, as you know, on the second floor of the police station. They, like anyone else, needs services for their area. And a decision was made at the time to contract with the town because we already have a custodial facilities department to do that work. So the agreement that you see in your packet was written for a 15 month period through the, through June of this, this year, 2020. My understanding was it was done for 15 months because they wanted to make sure that this was going to work out for them to have Norfolk staff do that. And I understand that they are very pleased with the service and would like to renew the contract. And because they're satisfied with the quality of the work, they would like to renew it for three years. So the agreement in your packet is very much as the first agreement was, except for a longer period. It includes a 3% cost of, cost of services increase each year built in. The amount for FY '21 is $38,192. Don't really have a lot to add other than that. I'm a board member. I should disclose that, of course, for the MECC. And this number is included in their budget to pay for it. I did, one question I did ask is, it wasn't on my radar screen that needed to be renewed because this was originally enacted before I started. It was just a, simply a timing thing that got, just didn't quite get noticed when it needed to be since the MECC was so taken up with other matters in the middle of the year.
Thank you, Blythe. And I apologize if I missed it. I was slightly distracted. But did you highlight the fact that the amount that we're proposing does cover all costs associated to the maintenance of the building?
It does. I mean, each, you know, each week, there may be a little less or a little more cleaning time, but it more than adequately covers the costs that we have to actually perform the service.
Thank you so much. I'll throw it to the rest of the board for any questions or comments, starting with Cece.
No, none.
Anita?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to anybody in attendance. If you have a question or a comment related to the contract for the building and maintenance and custodial services with the MECC, please feel free to use the raise hand function at this time. I am seeing none. So with that, I will move that the board approve the renewal of the contract between the town and the Mediacomment Emergency Communications Center for the period July 1, 2020 to July 30th, June 30th, 2023. Got it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is a unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Our next item this evening is to please consider approving the Southeastern Regional Services Group DPW Services Award for February 1st, '21 through January 31st, '22. Blythe, anything else we should know on this?
Oh, pretty straightforward.
All in the title. Any questions from the rest of the board? Anita? Cece? Head shakes, no? Questions from those in attendance? Hand raised function tells us yes? And I'm seeing no hands. So with that, I will move that the board award the CERDPW bid, services bid as proposed by the CERD Board of Directors for the period February 1, 2021 through January 31st, 2022. Do I hear a second? Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
A unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Our next item this evening is to please consider a couple of requests for the use of Town Hill. First, we have a request from the Exhale School of Dance for their Spring Dance Celebration on Saturday, June 5th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM with a rain date of Saturday, June 12th. And then we also have a request from the Garden Club of Norfolk for its annual plant and bake sale to be held on Janu- Saturday, January. That'd be pretty cool. Saturday, May 22nd, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM with a rain date of Sunday, May 23rd. Blythe, anything else we should know for this one?
These have all been run through the various departments for their input on this. Everybody's a thumbs up. I would tell you that we, we just received word from Exhale that they may want, they're going to be assessing their needs for tents possibly as we get closer to the date. And they may be back to request a board consider waiving a fee for a tent inspection, depending what they decide. But I'd suggest we go ahead and approve the two events tonight. We'll take that up closer to the event. But I see that they've, Jen's probably on the, on the meeting. I see her square there. So if she has anything else she'd like to add. Hey, Jen.
Hi, Jen. If there's anything else you'd like to add about the event or the scope or anything of that nature, please feel free to do so.
Sure. So honestly, it was a wonderful event. We ran it last year because of the need with COVID and being able to socially distance and be outside where it seems families, and I'm sure we all agree, is safer. We ran it last year with just small groups and it went very well. I have to say, I, a couple of weeks after that, I went to a craft store in Franklin. And the woman that was running it was like, are you the lady from Exhale? They actually were driving through and stopped in the parking lot church across the street to watch it because they just love seeing the little kids dancing. So it was really awesome to be sort of in the center of town. I think with everything that's going on, the safest thing for us to do is to be outside. And it's right across the street from the studio. We love being in the community. So if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Jen. I don't have any questions from my perspective. Cece, anything from your end? I think you're on mute, Cece. Sorry.
Again, every time I'm like backward. I almost said a naughty word, but I didn't. Not at this time. I, if the issue of tents comes up, we can cross that bridge, but certainly not at this time. Hopefully, things are even safer next summer so that something like this can go on.
Thanks, Cece. Anything from your end, Anita?
No, not now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll open it up for anybody in attendance. If you have any questions or comments related to the two proposed events for Town Hill, please use the raise hand function at this time. I am seeing zero raised hands. So with that, I will move that the board approve the use of Town Hill by Exhale School of Dance for their Spring Dance Celebration on Saturday, June 5th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM with a rain date of Saturday, June 12th. Do I hear a second? Second from anybody? Hearing a second. Do we have any further discussion? I'm hearing none. So we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
That is unanimous. I thought we were going to have our first stalemate second for a second. That was scary. Similarly, I will move that the board vote to approve the use of Town Hill by the Garden Club of Norfolk for its annual plant and bake sale to be held on Saturday, May 22nd, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM with a rain date of Sunday, May 23rd. Do we hear a second on this one?
Lightning speed, second.
Hearing a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous once again. Thank you very much, Jen, for joining us. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Our next item this evening is to please consider reappointments of the members of the 150th Anniversary Parade Committee. Blythe, unfortunately, one of the many downsides of us enduring the global pandemic has been the postponement of the celebration of our 150th anniversary. What can you tell us about the proposal here for the parade committee?
So Judith reminded us that this appointment, when it was made, was made for this calendar year because, you know, who knew there was going to be a pandemic? And we would celebrate in the 150th year and move on to the 151st. But it didn't work out that way. So she reached out to the committee and the committee said, you know, we still want to have a celebration. We're not exactly sure when that will be or what it will look like, but we'd like to be reappointed. So that is why it's on your agenda for tonight.
Thank you very much, Blythe. I'm sure that a 151st Anniversary Parade will be just as exciting and exuberant as a 150th. Donna, I see that you're on the call. Is there anything that you'd like to add in relation to the potential reappointment?
Hello, Donna Jones. I believe the formal appointment to a committee, the committee was called the 150th Anniversary. And I don't know if we, do you want to keep that committee name the same? Do you want to just change it to Town Anniversary Committee? Whatever the committee's called, I'm very happy to be reappointed to it.
Thank you very much, Donna. We appreciate you taking the time to be able to plan this out, especially with all of the roadblocks that have been put up along the way. So thank you so much for taking this on once again. From my perspective, I would prefer to keep it at the 150th, that that's kind of a landmark celebration date. I don't, I joke about the 151st, but I don't think that we should necessarily be drawing up pins and balloons that say 151 on it. The people at Bacardi might be upset with us. That being said, I will toss it around to the rest of the board for their thoughts and opinions, starting with Cece.
I am completely on board with 151 on balloons. I think that that would actually get people all fired up. We'll, we'll be able to sell them, make a little profit, draw people to our community, look at what we do. We have fun things happen on, on the hill and we have 151 balloons. Awesome idea. But really, I mean, however people want to name it, it's fine. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Cece. Anita?
I think it's fine to have it be the 150th Anniversary. I do like the symmetry of 151, that nice palindrome. It really is very sweet, but I get the historic nature of 150 years and I'm happy to stick with that.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Anita. At this time, I'll open it up for anybody else in attendance. If you have any questions or comments related to the reappointment at the At this time, I'll open it up for anybody else in attendance. If you have any questions or comments related to the reappointment of the members for the one hundred and fiftieth Anniversary Parade Committee, please feel free to use the raise hand function at this time. I am not seeing any hands at this time. So with that, I will move that the board reappoint Paul Terrio, Donna Jones, and Betsy Whitney to the one hundred and fiftieth Anniversary Parade Committee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. That means we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
That is another unanimous vote. Thank you so much once again to Mr. Terrio, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Whitney. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
I do have a question now that it's, uh, it wasn't really a question regarding the vote, but if this, is this a committee sort of in the vein of our current committee and all of the other committees such that they need to have meetings, publish the meetings? If they have meetings, publish minutes of the meetings that they submit that I can go and look at?
Uh, I I see Blythe shaking her head yes, and my perspective is that if it isn't designated as a subcommittee of another committee that would normally be doing that, then yes, they are required to do so.
So, um, in as much as there, if there weren't minutes, does that mean that they didn't have any meetings in the past?
Donna, I would actually toss that one over to you. Do you know of, uh, your, your, your past meeting schedule and if meeting, if meeting minutes were taken at that time?
Uh, we did post meetings on the, uh, my town government calendar. They were open to the public. At the time, I believe the advisement was take minutes in case they are needed. And I believe they have not been posted. Now, I, I will state that someone at the meeting was told, take minutes. Minutes have never been reviewed by the committee to be verified.
Blythe, are you able to connect with Donna to be able to highlight the path to being able to have those be collected and posted?
Sure, I'll put Donna together with Carol's office and I'm sure we can sort that out.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Our next item this evening is to please consider a six-month extension of the license for Norfolk Town Taxi Service. Blythe, what's the background here?
So, uh, the owner of the company, uh, in the licensing process has made us aware that, uh, COVID has not been kind to that business at all. Um, and that they really are, um, not very few of any rides, uh, in in most of this year. And, uh, they, talking to their counterparts in other communities have, uh, learned that some communities have simply extended their renewal for a six-month period uh, in hopes that they would, um, be able to get going, you know, and things are certainly looking a little like there's a pinprick at the end of the tunnel. Um, and so this is on your agenda to ask if you'd like to consider doing the same. Um, if they choose to start operating sooner, then, uh, they will have to pay the renewal fee and and go through that process with Police Department. Um, and then that's fine. We certainly hope that they're able to get back to work. Um, but this seemed like a, a very reasonable thing to do to help them in in their struggle. Um, so that's why it's before you for approval if you, if you want to consider it tonight. If they don't renew their license, uh, now and you and you don't extend it, then they have to apply for a new license and that is more expensive. So, uh, that's why we felt, uh, the extension was a, uh, uh, an appropriate thing to do.
Thank you, Blythe. Uh, I don't have any questions at this time. I'll toss it to the rest of the board for any of their questions or comments, starting with Anita.
Um, what is the renewal fleet fee?
Hundred dollars. And if they had to renew, if they had to pay it for new licenses, three hundred. So simply they wouldn't have to pay the hundred dollars now. They'd wait and pay it at the end of June for July first.
So I'm wondering with with the board, if we want to consider waiving that fee like we did for the, um, alcohol licenses for the, for this, um, person as well?
I suppose you could. It's their request just to wait and then, because I don't think they're planning to operate at all, but, um, unfortunately, we don't have another meeting scheduled before January first, so, um.
Oh, I'm, well, I'm happy to extend it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Anita. C.C.?
I would, uh, echo Anita. It's kind of become my thing. Um, that that unless somebody came, were, were to tell me, and I would imagine that Blythe would have given it to us as information in the initial colloquy, unless somebody tells me some reason why we ought not to do it. Um, while we are in the business of, uh, getting revenue, we're not in the business of doing it just to do it, and this seems like the right thing to do. So unless there was some reason not to particularly extend these folks um, because of some malfeasance, which I'm not hearing nor, nor do I think is, um, the case, I think that, uh, I, I agree with Anita. I'm gonna make bumper stickers.
Thanks, C.C. So, uh, Blythe, upon, uh, successful passage of this vote, um, perhaps we could identify to, uh, the good folks at Norfolk Town Taxi that they've been extended and that, uh, upon the next time we bring it up in the spring or summer, if there is a benefit to reassessing the fees for a renewal, uh, we'd be happy to take it up at that time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for anybody in attendance. If you have any questions or comments related to the current agenda item, please use the raise hand function at this time. For the two people that are in the room that are not, uh, in service of the town, I do not see a hand raised. So we will be moving on to a vote. I move that the board vote to approve an extension of the twenty twenty license for Norfolk Town Taxi Service to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Anita, oh.
Oh.
Oh, oh, I'm tired. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. You asked you.
Out of the queue. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Let's do it right, C.C. My world is rocked, Anita. You have to go first now. I'm sorry, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
And that is a unanimous, albeit earth-shattering vote. All right. So our next item this evening is to please discuss a presentation by the Police Department on future capital needs. Blythe, I believe we have a few things to look at and hear about with this one.
So we do. Uh, earlier in the fall, we gave you all your capital budget books and promised you we'd get back to talking about them. So here we are. Um, the goal of this, starting with the Police Department, is to give you a little more information and, you know, face to face, if you will, about the things that are in the capital budget, because sooner or later, we're gonna need to think about doing some of them. Um, and, and they're all, you know, collectively, they're all, uh, quite a lot of money. So, um, the Police Department, starting off, they've got the smallest list of items, but they're, they're very important. Um, and a couple of people are here to give you, um, a s- presentation about three items that are important to running the Police Department. That, those include cruisers, uh, replacement of firearms and replacement of tasers. So I'm not sure who's going first, but I believe we have Sergeant Heinz here to talk about, uh, cruisers and firearms and Lieutenant Shannon to talk about tasers. And so I'm not sure who wants to start first, but, uh, Kevin, um, you'll want to share your screen, uh, with that person so they can, can start off.
Well, good evening. I'll, I'll start off Sergeant Heinz. Uh, I drew the sh- uh, short straw, so it'll be me going first.
Well, you are now a co-host and should be able to share your screen. So go right ahead.
Okay. So just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to the board for allowing us to, uh, present you with these items. Uh, the first one on the, uh, our agenda is the cruisers. Let's see, I'm just gonna scroll up for a minute. So, uh, currently, we just want to go over the, our, our purchases over the last since two thousand nine. And as you can see from the, uh, from this slide, that, uh, not every year we do have two cruisers. Uh, there were years we, uh, because of constraints, we could not purchase any cruisers or years we could purchase one. Uh, there was also years we purchased three and then, uh, over, you know, since two thousand nine, it's, we've got a total of eighteen cruisers. And that's approximately one point three per year. Uh, the next, uh, slide is the current, uh, fleet that we have right now. So i- if you look at this, uh, our patrol vehicles, uh, which there are eleven altogether, including our t- detailed cruiser, which would be twelve. Uh, we're running five right now over a hundred thousand miles and one that's close to a hundred thousand miles. Um, and then you can see our administrative vehicles, which include our unmarked vehicles too for the detectives. Um, they're both over two hundred, close to two hundred and fifty thousand miles between the two. And, uh, we do also have two motorcycles. So, you know, currently, we, we have a fleet of eleven for our patrol fleet. Um, an ideal mileage, uh, to to replace the cars is seventy-five thousand. If you're a urban or city police department, it's a hundred thousand miles. If you're a highway patrol, um, or a state patrol. And, you know, we, we'd fall in probably right where, uh, the city departments are. Um, and as I already went over, five, the eleven have over a hundred thousand miles. Um, and the unmarked, once again, are, uh, well over two hundred and fifty thousand miles. So the, the average is one point three, uh, new vehicles per year over the past thirteen years. We try to assign two officers per car. Um, for several reasons, one of them, uh, the officers tend to take pride in, in, uh, the vehicle, uh, take care of the vehicle a little bit more when they're assigned to that vehicle. Um, keep them clean, keep them in good, uh, working condition. And, you know, when they're, it's just like our own cars. When we run those cars, uh, every day, we know when something's wrong with them. So we can report that to our, uh, Maintenance Division, uh, to the Norfolk Highway Department, uh, that does a, uh, great job and maintain our fleet. So we're just gonna give you a little, uh, synopsis of what we run on a weekday. Um, so you can equate that to why we have the vehicles we do. Uh, we have one sergeant, two patrol officers, uh, one officer assigned to the court, uh, one resource, school resource officer and one detective. And also during those days, we can have, uh, cruisers that are sometimes in use for training, court, uh, and, and other, uh, assignments or special assignments that those offices have. Um, and then where our detail of, uh, cruiser comes in is when we need that, if, uh, if they're in a dangerous area, we need lights, we need, we need to warn the public a little bit more. So that's where where that would happen and we charge an extra ten dollars an hour for the use of that car. Um, and then once the frontline cruisers are done, um, they are repurposed to either unmarked cruisers for the detectives or sent to other town departments. And so, uh, currently uh, we request, request the, uh, two marked cruisers, um, for the upcoming fiscal capital improvement. And that's, that's what I have right there.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Sergeant Heinz. Uh, I, I don't have any questions at this time. Uh, I will toss it to the rest of the board before we move on, starting with C.C.
In a town like Norfolk where, um, I, I can certainly understand in a city, it's stop and go and obviously the highway patrol or the state troopers have a different issue with, uh, highway. Why is it that they would recommend that your cruisers, you editorial, right, like departments, your size or similar size, um, suburban departments be traded in so quickly? What's the wear and tear? I mean, a hundred thousand miles would be a hundred thousand miles. What's the issue? Is it because it becomes more expensive to maintain them? Why, right? Like, because plenty of cars, I mean, I understand, especially nowadays, they don't make cars like they used to in terms of, you know, it used to be that you would have a car run two hundred, two fifty quite commonly, and now you don't see that very much anymore. And I assume it's in the caliber of the car that they're making, but I'm just curious why it needs to be done at around, I understand it's not specifically, but at around a hundred thousand or seventy-five thousand. What adverse impact does it have on the police to have a car with a hundred thousand miles on it?
So one of, one of the biggest issues is the idle time. Um, so you take that hundred thousand miles and you almost have to multiply it some, sometimes two, three times plus that. So you're talking to an engine, uh, a drivetrain, a rear end that has almost two hundred to three hundred thousand idle miles on it. So that's, you know, that's the, uh, monitoring on the side of the roadway, uh, when you're on scene of an incident, whether it's a crash or something at, uh, someone's household, you know, that car is, is, uh, just idling. So they have to go almost, uh, and that's the industry standard, uh, because the idle time really brings a lot and it, and that increases the maintenance to it and the cost.
Thank you. That was it. That's my only question.
Anita, any questions or comments for Sergeant Heinz?
No.
So I believe Sergeant Heinz is also gonna cover firearms.
That is correct.
Go right ahead.
Okay, let me scroll down for you a little more. So, you know, we just want to, uh, present, uh, we're, we're getting, um, a little long in our firearms program. We're at the eight-year mark almost here and, um, industry, uh, wide, it's, it's suggested that you start looking at replacing your firearms, uh, at ten-year mark. Um, and I'll go over some of the reasons why. Um, we currently carry the Smith and Wesson M and P forty-five caliber. Since two thousand twelve, we've had those, uh, you know, close to nine years now. You know, the, the Training Council requires us three times a year to fire these weapons. And, um, during that time, we're putting between those, those times and officers going out on their own to fire their weapons to train. Uh, we're talking about a thousand rounds per year going through the, the current firearms that we have. Um, so our own time to routinely clean these and inspect them, service usage and replace pots. Uh, once you stuck into the ten-year mark, that's when it starts to become an issue with the firearm working properly. We are currently researching available firearms, federal and state testing results and recommended bid specs. We've been obtaining, uh, testing and evaluation models and have been doing it on our own, uh, for our own testing. We expect the total cost of thirty-six new firearms and holsters to be in the area of twenty-five thousand dollars minus an estimated trade-in value for our current firearms of approximately eighty-five hundred dollars for a total cost of sixteen thousand five hundred. Uh, cost of ammunition, familiarization, training, qualification will be absorbed as part of our quarter, uh, part of our quarterly firearms training program. So we just want to bring it to your attention that we're getting close to that. It's close to the time to, uh, start looking at replacing these firearms.
Thank you, Sergeant Heinz. Uh, the only question I have is out of curiosity. It's just fine if you don't have the answer on the tip of your tongue. Uh, but do you happen to know the last time a Norfolk officer had to discharge a firearm?
Uh, to my knowledge, I have been here thirty-two years, uh, to, uh, discharge a firearm, uh, to defend themselves. I, we lock on wood have not had to have that opportunity. Um, but we not had to have to do that. We, we do, uh, discharge them, uh, sometimes and, uh, destroying animals to, um, because they've been struck by a motor vehicle or something like that. But to defend ourselves, um, we haven't had to do that in my thirty-two years.
Thank you very much. Uh, toss to the board for any questions or comments, starting with Anita.
Um, no, I, I'm, I'm surprised that firearms need to be replacing, but as you explained it, it makes sense to me and, um, in, I guess I thought in my head that they lasted forever, which is clearly not a rational thought, but it, that's what it was. But, um, no, thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Anita. C.C., anything to ask or add?
No, neither.
So I think at this point, we're turning this over to Lieutenant Shannon to talk about tasers, which are not actually in the capital budget, given how we plan to replace them. But we just wanted to take a minute to talk to you about that anyway.
Good evening, folks. I look forward to the day when we can meet again in person. Just let me get to my slide here. Sorry. Get this slide seven? Can you help me out? There we go. Okay, so Norfolk officers have carried tasers since 2012 and 2013. It's been eight years. Oh, I'm sorry.
Kevin, do you need to make the co-host so he can share his screen?
Lieutenant Shannon is a co-host right now.
Okay, forgive me.
It's a little late for all of us. No worries.
I don't see the box to share. Well, you all have the package that we sent to you with the handout. So as I was saying, Norfolk officers have carried tasers since 2012, in 2013. Originally purchased the tasers outright over the course of two years. Tasers have a planned life span of five years, and they are now in need of replacement. After studying purchasing à la carte versus purchase a program, we have determined that the best, most effective and beneficial way to purchase them would be through the program. The program allows us to purchase 35 tasers and holsters. Now, we have 21 full-time officers, 12 reserve officers, and we'd have two spears. The program provides for full replacement and training cartridges required for officers yearly, requalification, access to a licensed online recertification, and training records, plus extended warranty on all the units, batteries, et cetera, for the full five-year program. Also includes software updates. Every time that we docked our battery, if you will, the taser would be updated. The program also comes with a $10 million liability policy in the event of injuries and deaths. Currently, our tasers are beyond that policy. They're no longer covered under that policy. New tasers also come with a docking station, which automatically recharges batteries and downloads data. Current units must be manually downloaded, and batteries are not rechargeable and need to be replaced. The cost of the program, year one will include a trade-in credit for our existing units of $13,552. So the first year payment would be $8,767. Years two through five would be $20,580 per year, which would be for the full 35 tasers. If you have any questions, I have lots of answers for you.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Shannon. I think along the same lines of my last one, while not being indicative of my thoughts of the need or the request, how often would you say that we utilize tasers in self-defense on the force in Norfolk?
So every time that an officer arrives on a scene, the taser reputation precedes us getting there. People are familiar with the taser. They see it, they know we have it available to us, and it acts as a deterrent. We have deployed three times over the past six to eight years. So three times we've had to deploy it. But with the reputation of the taser, nobody wants to be tased.
Well, I appreciate you not offering to do a demonstration with a select person to identify how they work. That's not something we'd like to do. At this time, I'll open it up. Any questions from the rest of the board, starting with Stacy?
So this particular piece of the conversation reminded me of The Hangover. And so I wondered if you ever test the taser out on your coworkers? Do people volunteer? Like, do you ever have to have tests for the taser?
So during our initial training, several officers did volunteer to be tased. And there is video available of the experience. But there is also much more telling video available on YouTube. People that have been tased, big burly biker types, submit at the mere thought of being tased again.
Thank you, Stacy. Anita, any questions or comments for Lieutenant Shannon?
I apologize if you said this already. How old are our current tasers? I missed that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so they're seven and eight years old.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Blithe, was there anything else that we had for our presentation this evening?
Nope. As I say, this was going to be a short one because they don't have any number of capital needs. And I think they did a great job, especially since I understand both gentlemen have had to pull double shifts just recently. So doing this on probably very little sleep, I think they did an awesome job. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks to both of you.
Yeah, Sergeant Hines, Lieutenant Shannon, we do appreciate everything you guys do for us, day in, day out. But especially so with being able to provide us with this great information and background for future capital requests. We know that it's a stressful time right now with everything that's going on. So we do appreciate you guys doing that. Thank you.
Very much.
It's a pleasure.
Good night.
All right, our next item this evening is to please discuss the website the website posting of board correspondence. I do not believe that we have received a new correspondence that we didn't petition for from the community. Welcome for any input from the rest of the board or Blithe, if that is not true.
Nope, there's nothing new.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to our next item this evening, which are the town administrator updates. Take it away, Blithe.
Couple of things. Just so to continue with capital updates, in January, we have public works on January 5th to talk about. And there's a lot to talk about in that department, followed by the fire department on the second meeting in January. And we'll schedule the others after that. So just wanted to let you know it's coming. In other updates, I hope you got a chance to take a quick look at the water conservation award from DEP that the town received. They have a really nice write-up they sent along about all the awards they gave. But it was particularly, it was almost a whole page about their pleasure at Norfolk's work over a number of years to lower its unaccounted-for water, to update its billing practices, really that they feel we've taken a lot of strides in running the water system. So I wanted to make sure you got a chance to look at that. In other updates related to water, there were some questions I saw on Facebook today about some folks who had been concerned to get water sample bottles dropped off at their homes, not really knowing a lot about that. Apologize that we weren't aware that these were coming out right at this time either. But just to tell everybody, and I have posted this to Facebook, we did change the way that we are treating water and, which was approved by the state DEP, regulates us. In doing so, they actually require that we increase the number of samples that we do from user homes throughout the community. And they actually are the ones that get to pick the addresses and tell us where they need to be taken from. So what we're going to be just doing is getting in touch with people, making sure they know what's going on, and trying to lay any concerns they have about, who's this company dropping this off at my doorstep? So just want you to know we're working on that. Just a reminder, we've got the presentation on the police station on Thursday night, starts at 7:00. We are still finishing off updating the and making sure that the presentation is as thorough as it can be. So I anticipate we will post that at some point on the website on Thursday or Thursday night. And then the last thing is that we are expecting a large winter storm tomorrow night into Thursday. Just a reminder to people, and I should have done this earlier in the season, please make sure you're not parked on the street overnight, especially when the storm is starting, you know, just after dark tomorrow night. We really wouldn't want to tow any cars out of the way. That's inconvenient for everybody. So please do your best to make sure that you're parked off the street so that we can take, DPW can do their jobs to clear everything. So we're going to keep an eye on whether it's safe to open buildings for public on Thursday, or whether or not we'll have people working from home. We'll just have to assess that as we get closer. And those are my updates.
Thank you, Blithe. I probably should have asked this when we had Blair and Barry on the line. But how are we doing from a plow driver perspective? Were we able to obtain what we needed to be able to get by, especially with what's coming up in the next 24 hours?
We did. We changed our process this year. We offered a signing bonus, if you will. Wasn't something we really wanted to do because we didn't want to. Budget's always something to be very careful about. But we're competing with our neighbors and some offering more than we were. So we did get about 80% of the drivers, and we have all of the routes covered. If we didn't have enough, it just might mean it takes longer between each pass before a truck comes back again. But we've got a full salt shed. I'm not aware of any issues with any of our equipment. We have made a repair to the salt shed, but we are actively working on the plan to replace it because we hope it lasts the rest of this winter. So we'll be in the spring looking to unfortunately move that project up from where we hope to do it.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm glad we got to avoid me trying to put a plow in the front of my cord. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to Blithe's town administrator updates, starting with Stacy?
No, no questions, no comments.
Thank you, Anita. I'm seeing a head shake over there as well. I'll open it up for those who are on the call. If you have any questions related to our current agenda item, Blithe's town administrator updates, please use the raise hand function at this time. I am seeing no hands raised, so we'll be moving on to our next agenda item, which are some warrants to be signed. In review of the five we have listed, I would move that the board approve five warrants for the period of October 23rd, 2020 through December 8th, 2020, as printed on the agenda for this meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Everybody's in full anticipation of how this is going to go now, right? Hearing further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Stacy Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And all is right in the world. A unanimous vote. Thank you. And our last item on the agenda this evening is to please consider the approval of minutes. So Anita, please take it away.
Yes, I move that the board vote to approve the minutes of November 10th, 2020, and December 7th, 2020, regular meetings.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Stacy Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is a unanimous vote as well. So that takes us to the end of our agenda this evening. At this time, I'll throw it around to the rest of the team to see if we have anything else to share, starting with Blithe.
Just since this is our last regular meeting of the year, just want to wish everybody a very safe holiday season, given COVID. And our next meeting will be January 5th.
Thank you, Blithe. Stacy?
Nope, nothing.
Anita?
Just to piggyback on what Blithe was saying, I've heard so many people say, well, I didn't get COVID so far, so I think I'm good. And it's too soon to drop our guard, so be careful.
Very well put. Thank you, Anita. So with that, I will encourage everybody to please join our call on Thursday at 7:00 PM, where we will be outlining from back to front everything that we know regarding the police station project so that we can get everybody up to speed as to what transpired, when it transpired, how it transpired, and where we are today, as well as how we look forward. So it'll be a great, important, informative meeting for anybody who has the ability to join. I'm not sure if we plan on broadcasting that meeting live yet. We'll have to circle back with NCTV, but we'll get that figured out so we can notify everybody before we get to Thursday night. I know there's a lot of people out there. I mean, typically, you say, oh, it's the end of the year. We reflect back on all the great things that happened this year. Probably not so much the case of 2020. Everybody's ready to get into January at this point. But nevertheless, we do wish everybody, who we will not be talking to on Thursday, a very happy holiday and also a very happy new year. And can't wait for 2021 to start. So with that, I would motion that, I would move that we adjourn this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hard no. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Stacy Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is it for tonight. Thank you so much, everyone.